Chief Simmons. Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Garza. Laura McKnight at 4200 Langley Avenue. And I'm here this afternoon on behalf of the Council of Neighborhood Association Presidents. As y'all know, we had a list where we prioritized some of our major concerns in our neighborhoods. And then as a group, we tried to prioritize our top three concerns as neighborhoods throughout the city. And I've heard y'all mention a couple of the things that we covered. One was our park improvements. And we would like to make sure that there is funding available for improvements in our parks. And the other was traffic calming. And as you know, and as Ms. Myers stated, that's a big issue at many, many of our Neighborhood Association meetings, is that need for traffic calming and improvements to our sidewalks to make our neighborhoods more pedestrian-friendly, I guess along the lines of the Complete Streets Initiative. But I did want to come down this afternoon and thank you for everything that you do and let you know that we are here if you need more input. But we are very concerned as a group that we do provide funding for those.
Ms. McKnight, just let me say to you that I don't want to discourage you for whatever your list is of not getting taken care of, at least in part, in the 2013 budget. But what -- because the budget process starts like on October 2nd, you know, and they start working on the next year's budget, is get that list in in early October and then stay on top of it throughout the whole year, long before this is ever published.
Yes, sir. Well, and this is our, you know, first attempt to kind of participate in the budget workshop, so we're kind of learning as we go along.
Well, and I just didn't want you to be disappointed if some of the things you'd put on that list didn't occur.
Well, I kind of liken it to going to the grocery store with my budget and cash in hand and the kid saying, "Well, can't you buy me something?" And I say, "No." And they say, "Well, just write a check."
Yeah.
You know, we understand that aspect of it. And, you know, we just did want to mention that as a group, you know, those are our concerns. And just as you, as a counselor, going through and looking at the budget and, you know, wanting to approve certain things and looking for areas where you can find other monies, you know, those are our concerns. And next year, we hope to be included in the process, a little earlier in it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Chief Simmons. Now, just a reminder to the public and council, we're almost 40 minutes behind. And we have two previously unscheduled items to come up, the mayor's budget and MIS. And let me just ask councils or the committee members indulgence on this. I enjoy the discussion and I understand that the budget drives policy and the policy drives budget. That it's just a continuous circle there. So sometimes we do have to get in to perhaps individual items. But I think one of the things that's slowing us down is we get way, 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 way down past the policymaking body, you know. And, I mean, even if it was a city manager, form of government, not to, you know, we're really more of a broad policy one, rather than getting a tree put in here or a sign put up there. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, I would like to, if I could, introduce the members at the table with me. Wes Jones is our Budget and Planning Specialist and Christina Theologus is our Senior Administrative Assistant. Both of them help me with this budget preparation. We have a quick PowerPoint. If you have any questions throughout the PowerPoint, please feel free to interrupt. All right, again, our core values that we adhere to are courtesy, integrity, and professionalism. To give you an idea of our workforce, our total positions are 213. Police officers are 152. Crime scene are seven. And a reminder to you that our crime scene officers are also sworn police officers. We use them out on the street as well. And our non-sworn employees are a total of 54. This is just a quick look at a small piece of the budget. Actual fiscal year '11, beginning of '12, and proposed budget of '13. There's a reduction in the personal services and there's an increase in the operating expenses. The increases is due mainly to increases in training. Over the last couple of years, we've not been able to go to some necessary training due to budget cuts and also some ammo requests that have been, to this point, approved. We had to reduce our range dates to one per year, and we didn't feel comfortable that. So we were able to ask and were granted, at least to this point, some additional funds for to purchase ammo and to give us the availability to have two days, two range days than the totals at the bottom. Crime, we wouldn't have a police presentation without at least a look at crime, the good and the bad. Violent crime is down. This is based on UCR reports from 2012, although I have, we have recently seen the trend where crime has actually picked up just a little bit on the six-month violent and nonviolent crime. But again, getting back to the uniform crime reports, the nonviolent crime has gone up. And this was, this is where we saw quite a bit of increase in our vehicle burglaries and our thefts from vehicles. This was a situation that occurred probably earlier this year. And we really ramped up enforcement, made a number of arrests, working with Skimpy County Sheriff's Office, and we were able to stop quite a bit of this. We still see a lot of burglaries of people stealing air conditioner parts. But again, we've made some more contacts with the individual scrap metal dealers and they're working with us now and trying to put a stop or slow down to that sort of crime. There's, again, the burglaries, as I mentioned, were going up. Graffiti, I'd like to mention just a little bit, because if you remember, last year, we had, if you ventured downtown or some of our roadways, you noticed there was a lot of graffiti and different, what we call, taggings. Some of it was good and some of it was not, most of it was not. And what we have done is I've designated one individual to handle all the graffiti so that all the cases would go to him and he could compare the handwriting samples, if you will. We also purchased through council, through an LTF request, we have purchased 50 cameras which we hide and place in locations where we know that there, we're having graffiti problems. We have made 10 arrests, and they're such a tight-knit group that once we made these 10 arrests, that word spread pretty quickly. And we were able to really diminish the number of graffiti cases. We're not where we have eliminated it, as you can probably see if you go downtown. But just a quick example, in the first six months of 2011, we had 45 cases of graffiti. And in the first six months of 2012, we only had 19. And we're continuing to work on it. We do have a number of suspects. Quite frankly, we have some video of them, but we have not been able to identify them yet. And some of them are really young and we're trying to get their ID through social media and that sort of thing. So we have made some headway in the graffiti category. Grants, as you know, we can't do everything just with a budget, so we apply for every grant that does not have a monetary impact on us. Our first one, about a year ago, we got a traffic initiative grant. We've had some issues with some speeding. The traffic grants actually gave us one more speed trailer. It gave us four more radars units and then some traffic vests to put us in state compliance with the vest that we use to direct traffic. The other grant is the Automated Fingerprint Identification System, or AFIS. These are the systems that allow us to input a fingerprint and through a computer database, we were able to match those with known offenders, people that have been arrested. And this works, you see a lot of things on TV that are not really true. This is one of the things that is true. We can put these fingerprints in there and within a short period of time, we can get, you know, through the automated system, an ID on a number of people, and it really works well. It's probably, in my opinion, it may be one of the best technological advances in law enforcement in the last decade. Body armor. The State, the Department of Justice grant gives us money for body armor. And it's really one of our, obviously, safety of our officers is important. And this is a matching grant that we used the LTF funds to match with the Department of Justice grant. And we were able to purchase, let's see, 14. We have 14 vests on order right now, and we have 25 that are here that we trade out the old vest with the new vest. And again, the safety of our officers is always important. And we certainly appreciate the DOJ grant. We also have some grants that are pending. And these are the ones that you've probably heard of, but maybe has not come back to us. License plate reader, this is a system that we have a number of cameras that are going from our marked police car to the front, to the side, to the rear. And the officer will drive around and it'll take tags, every tag that the car passes, it'll take, it'll register, it'll run them, and it'll alert the driver, or the police officer in this case, if there's a stolen car behind you, if one just passed you going the other way, or if you're in a parking lot. And it'll be able to run all of these tags. It's really a neat system. The sheriff's office has one at the beach right now. I'm not sure if it's a fixed system or not, but ours will be, we have enough, the grant will give us enough to outfit two vehicles. And again, we just have to be prepared for the information that it gives us. It's really something very new and something we're very excited about. The digital evidence management, this is a management system that allows us to tag videos. We do so much videotaping of crime scenes. We gather video from stores. This allows us to tag them and submit them as evidence to the state attorney's office and so that we can verify that the video itself has not been altered. And it really works well with regards to the state attorney's office, getting that information and being guaranteed that there was no, there's no contamination or compromising of the video itself. All right, law enforcement technology continued. We're really trying hard to get some of this cutting-edge technology to help us, you know, to enforce the laws in the city of Pensacola. Online reporting system is what we're going to be working on. We've been working on for the last couple of months, and this should come to effect probably in August. Allows victims' nonviolent crimes to report online. What we anticipate having is this law enforcement, this type of technology, online on our website so that if an individual or a citizen has a theft of a piece of property that they do not have a suspect information on, instead of calling and taking an officer off the street to do that or coming down to our police department, they will be able to come on, go online, they'll be able to report it, and then they'll be assigned a number. And all of these cases will be investigated. It's not going to be thrown to the side. It'll be investigated, just as it would if an officer went there to make the report. But the thought is that they could do this at the comfort of their own home, after work, before work, at lunch, or whenever they want to do it. And they will know that we will take the report, we will investigate. But it does only, there's no violent crimes. Naturally, we want an officer to go there and evaluate what's going on. But we feel like there are a number of crimes that we get that the individual, the citizens could report their own, on their own. It'll save them time, it'll save us time, it'll save us money as well. We do, however, realize that this may actually spike, again, some of our reported crimes. We have gotten information that there are people that don't want to go through the bother of coming down to the police department and, you know, and reporting that their bicycle was stolen or their potted plant was stolen, or whatever it was that was stolen. And this will allow them to do that. But what it will give us is a better representation of the crime that we're seeing and that will give us a chance to maybe tie some of these things together. Again, we're ready to go here. We're just waiting to our, our website is up and running, and we want to be able to incorporate this into our website. Nixle, so those of you who are familiar with the system that Gulf Breeze has, what they'll do is that people will sign up and they'll get text messages for the bridge, it's being slowed down, a crash on the bridge. What we did was we went ahead and registered for Nixle. And before we were able to even try it once, people who had gone on the site has logged on as a Nixle follower of the police department. And we had 400 subscribers before we really, before we even kicked it off. What I, we don't want to battle Gulf Breeze with the Pensacola Bay Bridge, but if we have a road closed, or if we have a road obstruction, or if we have a large vehicle that's going to be going through the center of town, what we'll do is we'll put this out, just a real quick notice of traffic, or of anything really that we're concerned with. If we are stopping cars because of a, you know, a gas leak of some sort, or if, I should say, we, if the fire department's doing it, we can add that information here. And it's entirely up to the citizen when they want to get these alerts. They may not want to get them at 4:00 in the morning, they may be sleeping. But they can get them at their leisure. And we, we've already started, tried this, we've sampled it, we're ready to go for this. We just, what we're going to do is let our dispatchers, who would have that information, put that information, put that information out. Statistical tracking and response, this is something that new that we're working on. We call it the STAR program, just because we needed a fancy name for it. The, it's using our crime data analysts, analysis to track the information with about 20 areas in the city of Pensacola. And we track everything from violent crime to nonviolent crime to nuisance crime. And the thought is, we will look and see which areas of town have the most need for that, or taking our services and the most need for additional services. And that's the response part. We have a whole page of triggers depending on what we're seeing. If we're seeing more, more traffic crashes, then the automatic trigger would be a response to writing tickets. The reason this is helpful, we've always been able to do this, it's just we weren't able to get all that to the beat officer, so he also knows what's going on, on the day shift. And the night shift may know something the day shift does not. This allows us to, every Wednesday, first Wednesday of the month, we will have, we have a meeting, we go over this. We also take a look at where we have, what areas we have more traffic crashes than citations. And those are automatically triggered, so we would go there and we write citations. There are times when we have an officer that has some spare time, he has a radar, but he doesn't know exactly where to run those radars because he doesn't have that statistical information. And what we want them to do is be able to look at that, and then he can decide, he or she can decide where to write that, to run that radar. And then finally, accreditation. Florida accreditation is a standard, it actually helps us to achieve a recognized standard, and these standards are monitored by the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. It also gives us access to model policies and procedures and models of administrative policies. And we are about in the middle of this process. We have rewritten approximately half of the general orders that we have. And this is the first time we've done this. We have had general orders that haven't been checked since the 1960s and 70s. Right now, we're taking those orders and we're revamping them based on the model policies that have been tested and have been through judicial review. And it gives us a much clearer, much better look at what our policies are. Right now, we are on track for summer of 2013 mock assessment. Once we get the work completed, then we will have Florida Department of Law Enforcement and accreditation assessors come here, and then they will take a look at everything we're doing and then tell us where we're left wanting. In addition to that, as you can recall, we had what we call Power DMS software. This also came to council for LTF. And this allows us to track, for the first time electronically, every officer that reads his or her policy and procedure. In the past, we had them sign a written report, and we weren't sure if they signed it, we had to go back and track it. This will alert us if an officer has not read it and agreed and signed off electronically on this, these specific general orders. And again, you can imagine the paper, the paper that's saved by doing this thing. We also have the availability to do training videos on this. And we can, again, we can alert the officer, and they can have a training video, and then they sign off that they have signed it. Our supervisors will have a report, and it'll document that this officer or that officer has not yet seen that video or not yet signed off on that general order. It's just, it worlds better than where we were before, and we're very proud of our, what we consider, state of our general orders accountability program. And in short, that's kind of where we are. Again, we're looking more at technology than we ever have before, again, and training and that sort of thing. So if you have any questions, or I'll be glad to discuss whatever.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Chief, for your service and also for this briefing. I do want to ask a few questions on page 303. I know that you said you had a couple of positions you're working on, the screening process to fill. But there's four different programs or four different things on this page that are being reduced. The community-oriented policing squad, and I know that we've had great success in some of the neighborhoods in District 3, having assistance from the police department, and that's been reduced by 250,000. And then the school resource officer, I know how important that is in our public schools, and that's been reduced. Also, traffic, that's one of our biggest issues for public safety, and it's been reduced as well. And then the final one is vice narcotics, was reduced 109,600. Is there a reason for those reductions?
It's, the best we can tell, I can tell you that the vice narcotics unit has not gone down. We have the same number of people that we've had, vice narcotics. We have the same number of people. And, well, the school resource officer, we used to have two at each of the high schools and two, one at each of the middle schools. Well, we only have, we have two at each of the high schools, and now we have one at Workman Middle School. So there is a reduction down from six to five. And I'm not sure of the timing, but I think that may be part of that. A lot of the reductions are based on so many officers that have joined the drop and the personal services.
So it has to do with their rank as a total cost?
Right, yeah, because the ones that joined the drop are the senior officers, and the cost goes down for personal services. But the numbers are remaining the same, except for the school resource officers, which we've gone down one. And as you, as just a reminder, that the school resource officer program is half-funded through the school board. And if we don't have a school for them to be in, then there's nothing there.
Okay. Thank you, and that's all, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. President. We heard in the CRA report that we're cutting the CRA extra police patrols. I assume that's not reflected here, since the CRA budget isn't reflected in the CRA budget either. But how will that affect, especially now that we've got this whole adventure to be patrolling as well? What effect do you think we will see in patrolling in the downtown area?
There is a reduction, but there will be some money still, is my understanding, that will fund some CRA overtime. To say that there's no impact, I think, is not realistic. But we're working on scheduling. We were concerned that with the Blue Wahoos games, that there were going to be not necessarily on the field, the footprint of the stadium itself, but the couple of blocks that are surrounding it with a number of people. So we wanted to supplement our CRA officers there. The Blue Wahoos and the CNPA are paying the officers, they're doing traffic, and they're also doing the Blue Wahoos game, and they're doing a really good job. We haven't seen almost any crime around there. So we're able to take a look at where our needs are, and we go specific to needs. There were times in the past where we would have a police presence almost every day, a couple, you know, almost every, well, at least three, four times a week. Those are where the cuts are going to be. The cuts are not going to be when we have events. The cuts are not going to be on the weekends, when we have a large crowd downtown. But quite frankly, when you cut that much money, there will be some cuts. But we feel like we have given the, again, the number of officers that are hired off duty at the local bars and establishments, and the ones at the Blue Wahoos games and gallery night, then we think we can get by with the existing amount of money.
That's what I was, if you'd just allow me to interject there, is, I spend quite a bit of time downtown, and I would argue that the police presence downtown now is far greater than it was six years ago, because downtown has become a really thriving entertainment place, and so many people do hire their off-duty cops.
Right, yeah. And so, you know, when I go out downtown, I feel like there are more, like, I feel like I see more uniformed people out, and those are primarily hired from, hired by the organizations or as off-duty. Is that sort of what I, I mean, obviously, there's some who are just regular.
Right. What we have is an officer assigned to that beat, and then we will have our neighborhood services officers that also go through there as part of their routine beat. And then we will have some CRA officers that go through the areas in the CRA. And then a lot of those that you're seeing are, in fact, the ones that are hired by the establishment itself. Now, they're the ones that stay on, at the building site. But a lot of people don't realize that they don't have to stay there, they can make arrests wherever they want.
Sure.
But for the most part, they stay at that one establishment, and it is a huge benefit for the police department, because there are, as you can imagine, call after call for fake IDs, you know, disturbances that they're able to stop, you know, right away. And it is just a huge benefit to have that number of policemen there.
And so, like, if I'm a block away and someone steals my purse and I call 911, will 911 call the guy who's at, hired by Vinyl or whatever? Can they, would they get the 911 call and come a block away, or?
Yes. The requirement of working, what we call, an off-duty job, is that you are primarily a Pensacola police officer. It doesn't matter where the crime occurs, you will, you can handle it. And you are to monitor the basic channel, Channel 1, so that you can hear those types of things. And if you were able to monitor our channel, you will hear a lot of that taking place, a lot of our officers, our mall officers. In fact, the last couple of times we've had bank robberies up around the mall, our mall officers are the first ones to get there and along that same, along the same lines.
That gives us a little more comfort compared to hearing that we aren't going to pay for that. And then you mentioned a number of technology things, but I don't see your communications budget having to go up. That's sort of got a year lag on it, or do we see in this budget an increase in costs based on the new online programs and Nixle and all of that? Is that, it could be a small change, I just didn't know if it's a significant change in the budget.
You mean an increase for the dispatch for that? If the online reporting shouldn't go through the dispatcher at all, it should, we are, currently, we're assessing where we can have the desk sergeant's office take a look at that, who's sitting up front. Because the dispatches, you can imagine, are busy, you know.
I just meant the whole budget, you know, when you start buying programs and paying license fees, I didn't know if that, if it was a significant change in the budget.
We're pretty cheap, and we do what we can to get, I mean, quality, but we try to do what we can to get at the lowest price. If we're able to get a program, the Nixle is free to us.
Okay.
And the online reporting, as you remember, we went through the Law Enforcement Trust Fund, which was using the drug money, drug proceeds to get that. And we were able to get a multiple year on that. And the SmartCop program that we already use had this module in it, so the cost itself wasn't extreme. It's just going to be a fact of us monitoring it. Now, in a couple of years, we may have to go and renew that, but what we try to do is all this technology. And the other one, the stat tracking, was something that we already had. We were just taking our time trying to get that into a format that's more useful for us.
Okay. And I'll editorialize that I do like the online reporting. We spoke about that one time, because, you know, I feel cheesy calling the police for some lame thing that somebody has to drive all the way there or something. Not that I have much, but I know a couple of times when I'm like, "Really? We have to call and they have to come to my house for that?" And the Nixle, I was curious if that's something that, I know, having been a victim of this in the past, that with all of the runs and walks and things like that downtown, it's very confusing downtown, knowing where you can go, how you can get there. There have been times I've had ice cream melt in the car while I waited to figure out how I could ever get home, you know, things like that.
You should eat that ice cream.
Yeah, it was for a birthday party. It was more than I could eat. But is that, is that something you'll be able to put on Nixle so that, you know, people coming downtown can monitor when the roads are going to be closed in that area?
To a degree. I mean, how many characters we get, we're still, you know, formulating that.
Okay.
But absolutely, what we want to do is much as we possibly can. If the people want to hear what's going on and where they need, what areas they need to avoid, then we're going to tell them as much as we can.
Can it be specified, like, I mean, I could, you know, I'm not going to be driving down Langley on a regular basis, but I will be driving down Romana on a regular basis. Can I, you know, can I sort of say, these council districts, I want to be reported on what street closures, or is it just a general citywide?
I would think it's a general citywide. I'm not aware that you can say only east of Ninth Avenue, but I do believe that there are timeframes when you can, you can, you know, not receive Nixle alerts at night, you know, when you're sleeping. But I don't know that you can do that just from, we'll carve out one location.
Okay.
I don't think you can do that.
Anyway, thank you.
Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. President. Chief, I was looking at 9346, liability insurance. How did, it looks like we've gone up $80,000 on that. How does that process work? Do you, we bid that out? Do we just go to the same agent? Or could you tell me a little bit about that and why that's gone up? It looks, you know, 15% or whatever. Thank you.
Mr. Parker.
Mr. Johnson, if I could, the liability insurance is really the insurance line item. It covers both overhead for our risk management department, which does actually go out with all the insurances and bid those. So that would be property insurance and any other general liability-type claims, along with any police liability claims, any of those. The only other item that's in there that deals with the insurance is under your workers' comp, and those are your worker comp claims under 9130. But all other insurance, as it relates to the operation of the department, is in the liability insurance.
So is that bid? How does that, tell me about that.
The property insurance currently is through Florida League of Cities. Matter of fact, Dr. Wu led us there several years ago about their plan and their policy. And we looked at that, and it's continued to be a very good policy to do for the city. And it's bid out. And, um, it's bid out, uh, looked at once a year. Um, Florida League won it again this year. Uh, it's renewable May first of each year. Uh, and then the police liability and excess coverage for that is bid out and looked at once a year also.
Okay, so there, somebody said there's an insurance agent right here in, in City Hall now. It has nothing to do with that, must have some different insurance that we had recently bid. And it shows a firm out of Birmingham.
There, there, I, I really need to check with the risk manager, but I, yes, I believe there is an insurance agent on third floor that is the broker for the, uh, property insurance and the other insurances of the city.
That bid was just recently awarded?
Right.
Okay, that's-
It would have been, it would have been the May first renewal.
Okay, and that was an agent out of Birmingham, Alabama?
I need to check that.
Thank you.
On the, uh, Chief, on the 9357, it appears that other contractual services, it appears that it really from 2011 all the way out now is one hundred and seventy thousand. Could you give us some example, what, what sort of contractual service, uh, do we use?
Mr. Jones, can you?
Mr. Townsend, uh, some of that was for, uh, maintenance updates for, uh, we have a Toshiba UPS backup for communications that we need to purchase. Uh, there's the DataWorks Maintenance and Support Agreement. It's for the finger iPads, the Rapid ID, uh, units that the officers carry. Uh, Advanced Control Maintenance Contract, which was for the, uh, uh, the cameras that we have put up in the various communities. Uh, also it in, included an increase in the HVAC Maintenance Agreement. Uh, APHIS Maintenance Agreement, the new one that we're purchasing will require, uh, part of a year of maintenance agreement on that. Uh, Evidence Tracking, uh, Maintenance Agreement, which is, uh, tracking barcoding of all our evidence that comes into the, the department. Uh, there's a Coleman Tech GPS Service Agreement, and that one escapes me on what that is. You, oh, yes, that's a vice and narcotics item. Uh, there's also a, a crime report subscription, uh, and again, that one escapes me what that detail is on that one. Is that part of the online?
I guess, don't read one, sorry. It appears-
Okay.
We had leapfrog from a real small sixty thousand, now it's a hundred and seventy thousand.
Yeah, some of these items we were just covering in this year's budget and, and that we asked for, for the funding.
How busy, you're a legal person, you have a lawyer on your staff. How, what does that person do, the lawyer?
Uh, well, she does quite a bit. She, um, every, every morning, we have a staff meeting, and she is there to give, give myself and my senior staff, my captain's, uh, direction on a number of different things. She also, she puts memos out for current, uh, legal updates. And when we have issues whether we should, um, uh, take action on certain things, interpretation of state statutes, of ordinances, then, then she is the, the person that we go to. We, we use her literally every day. She, um, she also does our forfeitures. When we see something that was drug-related, um, and then we file forfeiture on it, she handles all those forfeitures.
Is she full-time?
Yes, she's full-time.
What's her salary?
Uh, I believe it's right at one hundred thousand.
I'm like-
I think it's right at one hundred thousand. It's Ms. Miss Wolf that used to be at City Hall.
Do you make that kind of money over there, Ms.?
Uh, I'd have to leave my contract.
Okay, okay, thank you.
He makes a hundred and thirty-five.
You make a hundred and thirty-five. I'm just trying to, trying to figure out, just, we'll make it equal.
I appreciate that, thank you.
So would she. You got a bargain with her.
Wait a minute, that's your budget.
Uh, I'm, I'm done.
That's a policeman.
All right.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Just a, a couple of questions, Chief. First of all, uh, how's the staffing been over the last couple of years?
Uh, well, the staffing, we, we, we've pretty, uh, stayed pretty much, pretty level. A couple of years ago, we were, we were down a number of police officers. And we really tried to, to hire as many as, as many as we can because we were, we were down so much. Over the last two years, and specifically this year, we have hired everyone that we've, we've tried to hire. I mean, we, as you know, hiring a police officer takes some time. We have to announce a test, uh, takes a couple of months, and then we have to give the test, and we have to give the oral interview, and then we have to do the background check. It can be extensive. Um, from that point on, we evaluate them and then we submit them for hire. Uh, typically on one test, we'll get anywhere from fifty to seventy-five applicants. And, and we usually only hire about five, we, five or six, and again, depends on, on what the, the test is. In addition to that, we put, we try to hire cadets, and we put them through Rookie School or the Police Academy. And then we try to hire them on as quickly as we can. So the, the, to answer your question, we are, we are, we've been continuously hiring police officers for the last year, and, and we're still down, uh, three or so. And, and we're working on a new test because our test we have recently had has, has been exhausted. But I will say that our number-wise, we're probably, uh, within a couple of being as high as we've been over the last five or six years.
I remember a couple, uh, years back, there was some, when there were cutbacks, there were cutbacks in the cadet program.
Right.
Is that back up to where it was?
Yeah, and, and what happens is when we suffer cuts, um, the cuts may only be for six months. But for us, it, it affects us for a year because, again, it takes so long. Once you say, okay, you can hire someone, it'll take us four to five months to hire a single police officer. Uh, the cadets were cut. Uh, we originally had twelve, and then we lost, uh, the Downtown Improvement Board took the, that, we went down to ten. And then we went down to some budget cuts, we went down to seven. So we're, but we are maintaining seven cadets. Um, we have six now, but we're, we are maintaining our cadets and, and we really need them as well.
Okay, and then, um, let me see, the last question, I'm trying to read my own writing here. This one is just a hypothetical question, ask your advice. I noticed the county, uh, does, it has extensive use of people from the county jail. Uh, any words of wisdom whether the city should do a similar type of thing? Because we're always looking for ways to save money, and I don't know if this is a good road to go down or not.
You mean the, the road, the grass-cutting crew?
Right.
They, we, we use them. They, they are kind enough to come to the Pensacola Police Department, uh, once every two weeks or so, and, and they do a good job, uh, better job than we could do, um, at, at the, the Pensacola Police Department. So we, we do use them, and we have special events that we need them to, to give an extra, extra little cut or trim to. Then they're more than willing to do that, uh, so we already use them.
All right, but I, what I was talking about was citywide. I don't know of other departments.
Well, I mean, in the past, what has happened is we were using them, and I'm not sure if the city was using them or not. And then they had someone escape from their road crew, and we, we weren't able to use them for a while. And now we, we've convinced them that we could, we could monitor them, and we have them. So I, to be honest, I haven't, I haven't checked for citywide, um, because it sounds like quite a big ordeal, and I don't know what the city needs, cities' needs are. Uh, that might need to be, that might need to be a conversation someone else has with Sheriff Morgan.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Ms. Myers?
First, I wanted to, uh, thank the, uh, City of Pensacola Police Department. I, I just think, uh, we have a wonderful police department. And I took the police academy course, the law enforcement course. And it was really and truly one of the, the greatest experiences I've, I think I've ever had. It was enlightening, it was, uh, lots of fun. And, uh, you got really close to people in, in that class, to, not just to the officers who participated, but to the people you go to, to the class with. So I, I would highly recommend if any council person has not been to the police academy, you definitely need to go, and so does the public. Because it really, um, makes you really appreciate, uh, what they get up and do every morning for us. And the, um, danger that they put, put their lives, they, they literally lay their lives on the line for us every day. Having said that, I want, want you to know that I've had occasion to call the police department, not the 911 number, but dispatch over things like somebody trespassing in the neighborhood woods or riding a, uh, all-terrain vehicle in the park and tearing it up. And just things like that, but the police response has just been phenomenal. Uh, and, you know, you, you take everything very seriously. Even the really serious things and the not-too-serious things. And I, I want you to know that I, I really appreciate the response time that, uh, we've gotten in our, in our community. Uh, I was kind of worried about that when, uh, the Maritime Park opened, that, uh, our neighborhoods may suffer in terms of police presence and police response. But I ha- I haven't noticed that, so I'm, I'm glad to see that. It appears that that's not happening. So, am I correct?
That, that is correct. And when we had our initial meetings, uh, with the Maritime Park and, um, the, the thought, our stance was that we cannot take a beat officer that's, that's assigned to, to our neighborhoods and supplement what, what's going on there. So, so we had our beat officer, and he, they're, they're told there to stay, what we call ten-eight, are available for service. Now, if an officer's in trouble, they'll help. But, but for the most part, um, in fact, I don't know of any time where we've had to have officers on the street leave their beat and then come back, and come back to where, where they were. In fact, yesterday, those of you who have, have noticed, uh, Friday, we did a press conference, myself and Mayor Hayward, and, and trying to get more officers on the street. And we were there, we were in full force last night, uh, myself included. And, and the, the first thing that we told, that I told them was we're not going to touch the beat officers. The beat officers will remain available to call, uh, for calls for service on, on the beat in our neighborhoods, and we will supplement them. That's, that's, that's the primary goal of ours, is to make sure we have an officer, um, available in our neighborhoods so that, that they can respond as quickly as possible.
And it does certainly appear that that is the case.
Thank you, we're trying.
Well, you've done a very good job.
Thank you.
Now, I only have a couple of items here on the budget. One is communication, and after taking the academy training, I certainly understand the importance of communication. But I was just wondering why, since 2011, it seems like the communication budget has gone up about two hundred thousand dollars. In 2011, it was, uh, six hundred and sixteen thousand, and then it jumped to around eight hundred and five thousand, and then it jumped up about another twenty-nine thousand projected for 2013. Uh, can you just explain why the communication budget has gone up so high? Or gone up so much? I don't know, maybe it was low to begin with, and it should be where it is now. I'm not saying it's high, I'm just wondering why, why the difference?
I think part of it was, is, uh, the communications, uh, the telephones, uh, the cell phones, uh, contract. Uh, I don't have a breakdown in front of me, so, um, but part of that is, uh, the telephone, the cellphone charges, uh, the new contracts. But I don't, I don't have a full breakdown.
Could you kind of get that information for us?
I'd be more than happy to.
Ms. Myers, I, I can, I can remember part, part of, part of this is that there was first a big jump because we did give all the officers cell phones because there's so many people listening into unsecure radio frequencies. And by putting them on, on, onto cell phones and laptops is what, and there's a communication charge for that too, to be on, be on the laptop is, is, as well, they can go, go to secure communications.
I see, okay, I was just cur- curious.
Is that, does-
That communication is extremely important, learn that.
Right, we, we, we'll be able to run that down and get that information to you. I, I think it, it's, it's a lot of things that are fitting in here. It's not all dispatch, it's all communications, and, and that's probably where a lot of that, that's coming from. But we'll, we'll get that to you.
The other thing is training. I noticed that, uh, in 2012, you budgeted twenty-five thousand dollars for training. The previous year was ten thousand dollars. Uh, this year, you've budgeted sixty, around sixty-one thousand dollars. Um, is there any specific training that, that's going on that would cause that increase?
Well, really, it, it boils down to all the training. We have, over the last couple of years, um, I think I may have mentioned it, that we have had to cut our training almost. That, that's the only, the only area of our budget that we could take money from to, for fuels and lubricant, and that sort of thing. And, and we, we have, we have foregone any training. I haven't done the training in three or four years. And so what we've done, we've been putting this, these training classes on the budget every year. But, but the, the, we just haven't been able to get it in our budget. This year, we've been able to get those training classes in our budget because after a while, you really start to lose some of the cutting-edge, um, information that you need as, as, as an investigator. Um, you know, homicides and, and the cutting-edge technology, the, the crimes against children, the, the, uh, the ICAC, the Internet Crimes Against Children training. A lot of that stuff we've had to, we've tried to hold off on, and, and we've made use of other training. We try to get people here, and, and that's part of what we're trying to bring back. A lot of that also is, is the ammunition that, again, I mentioned it, we only, um, we had to actually cut down a, a couple of years ago, down to one training day, um, a, a year because it's, it's beginning, it's getting more and more difficult to get ammo. And when we're able to get ammo, we can't buy enough of it to last us too long. So we've had to cut down on just the state mandated course. And what we normally do is more of a, uh, an interactive course, which we think is a better indicator of what an officer would see there on the street. So the, the increases there are, are all basically, um, the, the training that would go, that officers would go to, and also the ammo that we would need for training, and our, our SWAT teams training, uh, the ammo as well.
Well, I'd like to tell you real quick, if you don't already know, about a, a free training opportunity?
I'm always in for free training.
Well, you and I have talked about this, this before. But the Center for Independent Living got a, a grant to put on training for law enforcement on how to relate to and handle our people with disabilities. So we are going to put this training on. It will be at the Sheriff's Department. They're allowing, allowing us to use their training room and training facilities. And the person that we're going to bring here is Michael O'Sullivan, who was, uh, with the San Francisco Police Department for twenty-six years. He's an officer who was shot in the line of duty. So he's an officer with a fairly severe disability, and when it-
Ms. Myers, could you talk to the chief about that offline? I think that's an excellent id- idea.
Well, I just want, wanted, want you to know that I, I'm going to be sending you some information about that, so that will be free tra- free training.
We'll take it.
And, uh, I hope that, uh, the, uh, police department can participate in it.
We will, thank you.
Okay, good.
Okay, Dr. Wu just has one quick comment or question.
I forgot, I was remiss a minute ago in thanking you and your department. Um, specifically, there's three incidents. One was on Wood Cliff, and one was in Baywoods. Um, both involved a elderly widow living on her own, and the department reacted immediately. The third last case, the wife and I were down at the farmer's market, and somebody stole a purse. And I think there must have been four or five cars around that square within probably four minutes. So, um, y'all do quite an impressive job. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, Mr. Gerald's?
Well, I'll just say that we're having a twenty-five-year, uh, storm event. Just a little, little information.
Oh, no.
At thirty percent turned into a hundred percent right now. It's pouring.
Ms., Ms. Stoyce, anything more?
No, I started, I remember.
All right, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Spencer? Okay, Chief, yeah, uh, Mr. Wallace, I'm sorry, yes, sir.
Good afternoon, my name is Wallace Wallace, I'm with the Willenheim Neighborhood Association, and also known as CNAP. I do apologize that I came a little late, but I want to know from the chief, in your budget this year, I didn't get a chance to look at your budget. Do you have any funding in there to have any non-violent rallies in the neighborhoods? Or to have training for a citizen to help them, uh, make our neighborhood safer? To give them some training, the workshops?
All right, uh, Mr. Wallace, we've had, um, I think Mr. Jones contested this as well. We've had, last year, we had three or four, uh, non-violence rallies, and we used, again, we used drug money that we were able to secure, uh, to do that. And, and I anticipate using that same, uh, that same funding source for those type of things. But what we wanted to do is we wanted neighborhoods to, to partner with us. What we don't want to be is just a police department-type function. We want people to, to, to stand up in their neighborhoods and work with us, and, and we'll be glad to work with them as well. To include using, um, the funds that we seize. Uh, I mean, there's not a lot of funds there, as you, as you may know. But, uh, to use those funds in, in any way we can stop the violence in addition to the tactics that we've already, that we were using last night and we use, uh, continuously.
Okay. I would just encourage you, if I'm fortunate enough to be back here next year, is to get with me early on, the thing that I've heard from your troops over the last several weeks, is that they want probably as much as anything, is more training, more training opportunities. And first and foremost, as I'm having an alley background myself, I know that range time was also important. You know, it wasn't so much about being able to hit something from, you know, 25 yards away, but just the familiarity with your piece, and that you're able to use it. And I understand the interactive part, too, the shoot, don't shoot policies, you know, on that that comes along, you know, with actually firing the weapon. Yes, Ms. Dubuson?
I figured since we had time for you to give a little editorial, but I would come up with a specific question for the chief. Last year, I had an incident regarding a cyber issue, and there was only one officer who was able to come out to do the investigation. I believe he was also assigned to the child pornography and vice division. Do we currently have more than one officer working cyber crimes or any training program, since that looks like the area that maybe crime would be growing in the future? Do we have any, anything in the budget for that?
Well, I don't know that it's in the budget, but we do, we do have two officers now that are working on the crimes against children. And we also have a couple other officers that are investigating the online-type fraud and forgery cases. So I'm not sure why we only had one that could do it. If it meant actually taking the computer and running a forensic check on a computer, then that type of expertise is very few. In fact, the officer that we have, Officer Wilkinson, is known throughout this area, has one of the top ones, and we have the equipment to do that. That takes a very, takes a long time. But if you're talking about, you know, internet fraud-type things, then we have a number of officers that can do that. Again, but if you're looking at something that would require a forensic look inside a computer, then that will take a while, and our expertise is down to not one officer, but two officers.
Okay. I appreciate that. And I just want to encourage you to see if there's not something you can do with the federal government and the intelligence transfer, since we have specialized forces in this area developing that. I think there might be some opportunity for more of your officers to get that training at no cost.
Right, yeah, thank you. We are constantly going to that type of training. In fact, the task force that Officer Wilkinson is involved in is the FBI task force, and we make use of everything that they get. In fact, they use our officer to do their training as well.
Okay. Anyone else from the public? Okay, thank you, chief. Fire.
Where? I said, where?
We should all be back. Well, you can run outside.
Yeah. We've got two chiefs and a battalion chief. Welcome, gentlemen.
Two and two.
It's a pleasure to be here at the Fire Department to talk about the fire budget. In the 2013 budget, we have undertaken a major reorganization within the organization as far as personnel goes. And our numbers in the 12-budget total personnel are 120, and with some reorganization within the organization, we'll be able to increase that to 123 personnel, excluding the temp and the ESP person. The way we did that was in '12, we had two deputy chiefs. We downgraded one of those to battalion chief in training, which was occupied by a captain's position. And then we had nine under vacancies, as far as promotable positions were concerned. That was six captains and three lieutenants that we downgraded to firefighter. And that upgraded, looked on the ground. That was the tasking, and we did it within budget. And as you'll see in a subsequent slide, we saved a little money while we did it. So that should get us back to the endpoint of 14 bodies in the north, 14 in the south, and then three at the airport with 31 minimum manning. That gives us, we're back to the ability to fight two simultaneously fires fully staffed at any given time within the city. So we are, that's the essence of the reorganization. Annual calls for service, as you can see, is pretty steady, with EMS being the largest share of those medical calls. And we're on target this year to be pretty much in the vicinity of 2011 for 2012. Budget summaries, you can see, you've probably already reviewed this data. We have a slight increase in this year's budget, but that's just to cover the cost of doing business for the most part. Budget projection and handouts, we have a couple of slides that'll address these two things also. The ALS program and the reorganization. I spoke briefly on reorganization, and now the follow-up slides for that. We'll take care of this one first. I thought it was going to be next. But in the FY '12 Penny for Progress funding, this is the last capital outlay we have in Penny for Progress for the Fire Department, and that's a fire pumper, which will be here this fall for $350,498. And that is the last major purchase in the current PFP funding that runs out in 2018. As part of the FY '09 Port Grant, and I'll touch on grants a little more here as we move along, there's a fireboat coming this fall as part of the Port Grant, up to and including a slip down at the Port of Pensacola that houses it for $601,188, plus all the training that goes along with standing up a marine operations division within the Fire Department, all funded by the FY '09 Port Grant.
Will that require new personnel, or will you just train some personnel so that when the fire comes, they just, you know, and jump on a boat?
As part of the reorganization, with more boots on the ground and to help justify within budget the three additional positions, that was all part of that calculation, to where we could move staffing to the boat, which would be a company officer and a helmsman, we call it, at least a two-person crew for that boat, without pulling down the fire protection component and the medical response component of what we do on a daily basis with current staffing for 2013.
Will there be people stationed there, or will they just be the fire station one or whatever, leave them run out there?
They'll be positioned where the qualified people are to run that, primarily at Station One. And as you well know, or if you don't know, we have a 21-foot skiff there that we provide marine operations with right now. It's got an outboard motor on it and a truck to pull it, and we usually launch it 17th Avenue for waterborne rescues or emergencies that we have today. So depending on the type of incident and the time it takes to get in route, either launching the skiff out of Station One at 17th Avenue, or launching the fireboat, if it's required, out of the Port of Pensacola, that's a decision we'll make at the time. And we have staffing within the reorganization to comfortably do that for any given response.
Okay, thanks.
Let's see, I need to go previous. There you go. The other issue that we put in here, this is a non-funded item, but it always seems to be, we get asked about it, so I wanted to make a slide for it, and that's the fire station three boat placement. It's awaiting funding. Estimated construction cost at 1.6 million, architectural engine cost at 400,000, total estimated cost at 2 million. And the other comment I'll make about this is that initially, we looked at remodeling it like Station Six was after Hurricane Ivan. It got heavily damaged after Hurricane Ivan. Both stations are the same architecture and built at the same time. We had the architect work both ways, replacement cost as well as renovation cost. And come to find out, after the numbers were crunched, those numbers are pretty much the same. So the decision was made through the engineering department and with management staff to pursue funding when it became available to replace the station vice renovated.
Chief, if you do that, then instead of having to have a trailer like they did at Station Six, would you be able to keep the people in the current station and build the community one beside it?
Yes, or where that station would ball on airport property down there along Summit somewhere.
Right.
We've had just minimal discussions, the chief Glover and I have here with Melinda Crawford at the airport, and she's up for, when the time comes, you know, looking for funding if there's not FAA funding to put it on the air side or somewhere on the other side of Summit Boulevard up in there, if airport funding could be brought to bear to help defray the cost of the replacement station there along airport property. But she is fully committed to providing another location on airport property for a subsequent fire station.
Ms. Louise.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I would just like to get clarification on awaiting funding. I know that Mr. Reynolds went, took a trip to DC to work on some FEMA funding that we hadn't been reimbursed for. That was a possibility of a million dollars for this. And we all know that there was $800,000 moved out of the Fire Department last year to fund other projects in Penny for Progress. So what is awaiting funding? How, what's the prospect of being able to refurbish this fire station?
Awaiting funding is my word, but there are no prospects that I'm aware of for any funding for this project as it stands today.
That's a real shame. Thank you.
As I alluded to earlier in the reorganization, this is the actual nuts and bolts of how it was done. Six fire captain vacant positions and three fire lieutenant vacant positions were converted to professional firefighter at a cost savings of $256,100. Three new professional firefighter positions were added. That's what brought our current staffing from 120 to 123 in the 13 budget. It cost $180,200 overall savings by doing that. Within the budget were $75,900. Benefits of being able to do that is increased coverage, including marine operations, as Ms. Pratt alluded to earlier, rescue trucks adequately staffed, level of service enhanced, and overall cost savings. The other issue I get asked about a lot, which was addressed early on in the budget, but is also not budgeted or funded, is ALS, or advanced life support. And I wanted to give you the numbers of what that would cost for the first year to get it stood up and the training completed. Average cost to pay 47 EMTs, which we have today, by the way, and these people respond all the time, and five paramedics is $116,802 annually, paying EMTs 3% of base pay, and paramedics, five paramedics, 6% of base pay. And these are numbers that we just came up with as a staff. This has not been negotiated or anything, so all that process would have to take place if we ever get going down that road or find the money to go down that road. And these numbers could change accordingly, of course. A one-time cost to train 15 personnel to paramedic certification, as you see here, we have five. We believe we need 20 across the three shifts in order to provide 24/7/365 ALS protection within the city of Pensacola. And when we declare ALS within the city of Pensacola, by Florida statute, we have to have at least one paramedic able to respond in that venue as a paramedic.
How long would it take to get the 15 people trained?
A year.
12 to 18 months.
Isn't there an income opportunity here, too, to be able to be paid back for the services on site that we aren't currently being able to be paid back for, if we're providing not just basic life support, but advanced life support?
That would be a negotiation with Escambia County. Right now, they have the certificate of need to provide ALS and transport within Escambia County, and that would be a negotiation that would need to be had with them in order to pursue that, because they currently have the certificate of need.
Right, but we wouldn't want to transport, so there is some income opportunity for this. It's not just a cost. It's a service to the citizens, and then we can also recoup some of the cost, right?
Correct. And if they're willing to share that, yes, because they bill for it now. Even though we provide the service and they do the transport, they'll bill for it. They bill for it. Sure.
I'd like to say something also as it pertains to going to an advanced life support system and being able to provide that service. If you look back, I think at the third slide, you don't have to necessarily go back, but that really highlights, in my opinion, the need to go and move in that direction, because last year, 65% of our call load was medical services. And it just makes good sense for us to provide that level of service for our citizens, because that's primarily what we do, is provide that service. So we just hope that you'll keep that in mind, that that's, you know, the lion's share of our call load goes in that direction. Thank you.
Just one more question, if I could, on that. Is there a reason it was pulled from the budget? I know that this was discussed with Mayor Hayward about two weeks after he was sworn in, this opportunity. Chief Allen presented it, and then I was asked to go look at it as well by Mayor Hayward. So we, you know, two years of looking at it almost, is there, was there a reason?
Not given to me.
No? Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions or anything on ALS?
Yes, Dr. Wu.
To support what you two gentlemen just said, we can't thank y'all enough. I think I mentioned there were two incidents that I was at. One was at, believe it or not, a funeral at First Presbyterian, and a gentleman in the pew in front of me had a heart attack. And had it not been for Pensacola Fire Department, I wonder if that person would be here today. Both crews showed up, but the Pensacola Fire Department was there way ahead of time. And people need to keep in mind, if you're having a heart attack, one to two minutes makes all the difference in the world. Second instance that comes to mind is, wife and I were at Oscars with Commissioner Young and Reverend Young, and he had a fainting spell. And again, both units were called. Pensacola Fire Department was there probably five, 10 minutes before the county showed up. And thank goodness, everything worked out all right, but, you know, you think the fact that you're there early, this is money that's worth every penny that you can put into it. And then the last thing is a commendation. I've heard of cases where y'all have gone in the evening and put seniors back in beds. They've fallen out of a bed and had no one else to call, and they've called the Fire Department, and y'all have gone over and taken the senior and put him back in bed. So there's so much that y'all do that people don't realize, but y'all are to be commended. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I would like to make one more comment on this, because it is, it is something we're asked about continually. And I am a paramedic and have been for 20 years, and I did a lot of this research for this, and I can give you some information about where these numbers come from. One is, that first-year cost includes that one-time cost. It's very important you understand that one-time, $150,000 cost, that will go away. So it's not going to be $317,000 per year. That's important. The second thing is, the Escambia County EMS is tremendously helpful and encouraging when it comes to this. They're going to provide, their medical director is agreed at no cost to be our medical director. They are willing to let us work under their certificate of need at no cost. They are willing to give us their LifePak 10s that they're replacing with the new LifePak 12s, which is about a $70,000 savings. They said they will do everything short of funding it that they can possibly do to encourage and assist us with doing this. They will provide all the training at no cost to maintain our CEUs once we have our paramedics, because they have to have CEUs. They'll let us come sit in their classes, basically. It's just tremendous the amount of help that they're willing to give. So this is a great deal. If ALS is the direction you want to go as a city, this is a great deal.
Well, let's work on that for this next year, 2014, getting that done. I don't see it happening in the 2013 budget, Chief Allen, but thank you. Just an aside, how do you keep up your certification?
Escambia County EMS, because I worked there for 10 years part-time, allows me to go and sit in on their classes for free, so.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you.
So Ken, I just, recurring costs after the 317 first time is 116.
I'm sorry, Councilman.
I'm sorry. Yep.
Guilty. No microphone. Again, we would have to maintain the 116 in our, add that to our annual budget after this.
That's correct. That's correct, and that number will go up when the 10 others are certified as paramedics.
Right.
So that number could run around 140, 150, and that would be an annual increase to the budget, uh, from there on out, depending on pay raises, but yes.
And I'm just going to now take this to, ask you to take this to layman's terms. Um, as in contrast to first responders, then this provides, give us an example of, of what the advanced life support does beyond the first responder.
Advanced life support is invasive treatment. You can break the skin.
Invasive, okay.
When you, you go beyond, um, providing palliative care such as, uh, bandaging, first aid type, type thing, and first responders do provide CPR.
Right.
Uh, but, but it's not with any type of assistance like, uh, oxygen and equipment. When paramedics arrive, they intubate and, and control the airway, and they start IVs, and they give lidocaine and, and atropine and other drugs, cardiac arrhythmia drugs, so that they can treat the symptoms. They can, uh, give dextrose to someone that's having a diabetic emergency, things like that. So ALS is, is exactly what it is. It's, it's advanced life support. It, it, you can pass medications.
Right. Where are we as a, as a, as a city of a population just north of 50,000 compared to our peer groups, to our peers in this capacity? Have you, have you done any homework on that? Where we are on the bell curve, so to speak?
Not in a given percentage, but most departments our size are providing the service.
Okay.
I don't have that number. We'll get that for you, but most are.
That, that's helpful information.
Ms. Dubuson.
Yes, I was just wondering if the Chief could comment on how this might be perceived as an economic development incentive. For instance, we're trying to lure all these companies who are looking for a certain level of, uh, services for their employees and their companies. Would this be seen as an advantage in bringing us up to a, more of a secondary city rather than a tertiary city in terms of consideration by these groups?
Yes, ma'am. Though the Fire Department does not provide a revenue source as far as enhancement of services delivered within the city of Pensacola and attracting, uh, businesses and those people, uh, to the community, the enhanced ALS service from first responders, I think is a, uh, huge benchmark in raising the bar for attracting people that are looking for that level of service, especially in a retirement community.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. As a, just a basic question for, um, uh, first responders, and it relates to the use of defibrillators in, um, uh, the public schools as well as many of the other public areas in our community. What has been your experience with the use of defibrillators by, um, non-healthcare practitioners? You know, we, we were all taught at the school, if someone, uh, is having a crisis, that we run down the hall and get the defibrillator, and come back and, and give them a shock. In the meantime, uh, 911 has been called, but what's been your experience with, um, I would say, well, even though training was provided in, in the schools and in all of the settings as to how to use those devices, but what's been your experience with the use of them? Survival rates?
Survival rates go up tremendously when defibrillation is done within the first 60 seconds to, to two minutes. Um, after that, the, the cardiac muscle becomes less and less receptive to the shock. Um, so that's why the goal is ultimately that, that's why all hotels have them, schools, ultimately to have them available within a minute or two, anywhere you are at any point given day. They're in all the police cars, all the fire trucks. Um, the, the goal is they have to be, it has to be done quickly. Uh, and now they've got them to where, uh, very little training is required. Uh, you, you basically just put the pads on, and then you just push a button, one button, and it'll do whatever it's supposed to do. The advantage to a paramedic or ALS, because I feel like that may be your next question, is what does an ALS defibrillator do differently than just an automatic defibrillator that a layperson uses, is that the automatic defibrillator will only shock one rhythm. And there are other shockable rhythms, but to, to err on the side of safety, it only shocks the worst rhythm, and, and it will not shock any other. Uh, whereas paramedics, on the other hand, will give medications and in shock at lower levels of energy, other rhythms, and can help the patient that way. So, so ALS-trained personnel use their defibrillator far more than maybe an automatic external internal defibrillator that we have in a mall or something.
Excellent. Well, that helps to improve the, uh, survival rate, which I sort of suspected, but that's good. But while I'm, I'm speaking, I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the presence of the Neighborhood Association President, because it's apparent to me that the conference that they had a couple of weeks ago was, uh, effective in encouraging them to participate more in, um, governmental meetings and other things. So hopefully we'll continue to see their faces, because now I think they really understand that if you want results, you have to be present, uh, on a regular basis, and it's good to see them here. Thank you all for coming. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Chief?
Uh, yes, um, Councilwoman Pratt had a couple of questions that she, uh, had asked us to respond to as far as objectives within our budget, and I'm willing to do that. Should I press on or wait for her presence, or what's your pleasure, Mr. President?
Well, answer them when she comes down.
Okay. That was the end of our presentation, except maybe for some discussion.
All right. Mr. Dewey.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I do have a few questions. Um, Penny for Progress, you had mentioned that this, um, last apparatus we're purchasing, or the boat, was the last thing, and I see-
The apparatus, ma'am, the boat's grant.
Okay, it's a grant. So we had one more, and I see in the Penny for Progress, it lists the ones that we, we replaced over the term from 2007 till now, but can you give me an idea, because there is no funding from here on out within Penny for Progress for fire apparatus? The age, the average age of your pumpers and, um, ladder trucks?
Average age of pumpers right now is nine-
Or the oldest, or whatever you have off the top of your head?
Is 9.6 years.
Okay.
Uh, average age of ladder trucks is 7.5, but by the 2018 mark, three of the pumpers will have reached their 15-year life cycle. We set life cycle in the Fire Department, uh, 15 years for pumpers and 20 years for ladders.
So-
So three of the pumpers will need to be replaced at the 2018 mark, 2017, uh, when the new PFP, hopefully if it's, uh, approved, uh, comes to fruition. Now, that's our timeline, uh, industry standard within the organization.
And I know we have some, uh, apparatus that are no longer being made and replacement parts are hard to find.
They are. For the most part, those are in the reserve fleet.
Okay.
Uh, because we are required to have two reserve pumpers and one reserve ladder and one reserve rescue.
And I saw that in your commentary, that you're using parts from others to help the, maintain your active fleet.
We are.
So that, I mean, where would you get funding from then if we didn't have, say, if the citizens don't approve a Penny for Progress after 2017, where would we find the dollars for fire apparatus?
Historically, they came out of capital accounts before PFP and/or, uh, uh, bond issue.
Bond issues, okay. So that's not good news, though, if we, I mean, public safety is our number one job as a government.
Yes, ma'am, and unfortunately, the equipment is extraordinarily expensive.
Yes. Okay, and then my, my other question, um, I've already talked to you about the, uh, the, um, fire station, which is terribly disappointing that there's no funding for that, and I'll probably bring that up later, um, with the mayor. But I do want to find out, um, we had discussed this last year. It was brought up by the union representative, and also, um, Mr. Barker had agreed to it on page 299. The overtime, because of the way your contracts are negotiated, um, holiday pay and overtime are on one line. And I, I mean, Mr. Barker, absolutely no harm, but every month, the Fire Department is beat on for overtime in your monthly financial reporting, and it's out of whack with the actual truth of the matter of what that is, because it is actually holiday pay, and part of what was asked for by council, and I believe it was part of the contract negotiations, was that that be separated out. Um, and it's still just one line item on here.
That's right. Uh, um, Councilwoman Dewey, it will continue to be one line item on here. Matter of fact, the, uh, president, uh, of the union contacted Yvette about it, and we will footnote it on that page, like you, like the other issue that was mentioned earlier. We can put an asterisk on that page and put it down here what that is.
So on the approved budget.
He's pointed it out to it.
Okay. I just recalled talking about that, and I, I just, it makes me cringe every time they're called out for that on our monthly, um, budget reports. And then the only other one was other personal services. On that same page, there is a new item, um, for $30,000. I'm not sure what that item is.
Well, the, the, no, the other personal services chief was an issue where it used to all be an EPS.
That's right.
EPS is the one employee you have hired through payroll.
Correct.
The other is the other individual you have hired through an agency.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a temporary that he has in the office.
Right.
Okay, so part of administrative. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
And I want to thank you all for your service to our city, and please carry that back to all the firefighters. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Any, any, uh, questions, comment from the public? Philip? Excuse me. Mr. Hoffman.
Philip's fine. I'm good with that. I'm president of Pensacola Professional Firefighters. I only have one question. Educational reimbursement. It was addressed last year by a few of you, and it's still not in the budget. Just see what the Chief has to say about that.
Along with the rest of the city, I don't think any educational reimbursement has been proved in any budget, to my knowledge, and, um, we're just, uh, in the bucket with the rest of the departments in that, uh, in that area.
Uh, Philip, uh, when I got my briefing from Mr. Penzone, I, I know that was showing up in at least one of the union contracts, and I, I don't recall right now which one it is. Is that in the one that you guys have tentatively approved?
Uh, currently, uh, well, contrary to popular belief, we have not tentatively approved a con, three-year contract in the city. We've only tentatively approved our pension order, um, but it is showing up, the educational reimbursement in one of the offers to the police, or the FOP.
Okay.
It has not shown up. Um, I believe it's still on the table for us. We haven't gotten to that section yet, but I just wanted to bring it up, point it out.
Okay, all right, thank you. Public? Anybody else on the committee? Oh, yes.
Charles Baugh, 3019, Keats Drive. Just a quick search of ALS providers. Bonita Springs, which has a population about, uh, 42,000. They've been doing it for seven years. Ormond Beach, about 36,000. They do it also. So I think it's something we definitely need to consider.
Thank you. Okay.
That brings up, just really quick.
Yes.
One more question, and I, I, I can't remember this from the presentation before, but based on, you said 65% of our calls are medical calls, um, what you would expect reimbursement to be if we negotiated that with the county? Um, isn't it, I'm remembering something about up to $500 reimbursement that could be filed?
I spoke to that with, uh, Mike Weaver. He's the director of Escambia County EMS, and he said that there has been a change in state law concerning the, um, first responder ALS being able to bill insurance companies, which is where I was getting that from. If you remember, and, and I won't go into a long thing, but do you remember there was a short period of time about four years ago where if, uh, people were visiting, tourists were from out of town, and they incurred, uh, a motor vehicle accident, and they incurred expense, uh, and used those services of that city, then that city was able to bill the insurance for 100 to 500 dollars. Um, state law has since changed, and that's been closed. And so along with that being closed, the first response ALS has been closed. Chief Schmidt mentioned that we could discuss with EMS whether they would want to share some of their bill. They do currently bill whether they could share some of that. They made that offer in 93, I'm aware of, but that was a long time ago, but it could be discussed in negotiations.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you, Chief. Mr. President, I do have, um, the, um, MIS Director here, if we want to- Yes. Sure, sure, just put him in front of, uh, Penny's for Progress there. Yeah.
Thank you for your time this afternoon.
Chief, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I'm sorry I acknowledged one of the battalion chiefs, but to all four of you, thanks. Mr. Paul Jones, uh, is our, our new MIS Director. Um, he didn't have, the actual budget was developed before he was hired, but, but he is here to speak, to, to speak to the budget. One of his staff members actually worked on the budget with him, and she's out, uh, this week too, but he's here to answer any questions that, uh, the council may have. There's not a formal presentation. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna open this one up as just how far behind are we in where we need to be in MIS?
Excellent question. Truthfully, we're, we're not as far behind as, as I think some people think. There's a great foundation established. I, and, and last week, I was able to attend FAGISA, which is the Florida, um, CIOs and city directors, and, um, truthfully, I think there's a lot of great foundations set. It's just a matter of now looking at some strategies and some things to continue to move forward. But are, are there areas that certainly need improvement or that we may be behind on? Yes. But there's, on the other side of the coin, there's absolutely things that we can leverage. I think they'd be able to really make some progress quickly.
Well, um, one of the things I've, I find interesting out of all the areas that they probably could find room for improvement, when we get our, um, annual audit, really the only performance, um, part that, that comes up in that audit is not doing enough cross-training in the MIS department. And, uh, I, I hope you'll find a way to, um, find the time to get some of that cross-training done.
Absolutely, and just to kind of address that, one of the things that I'm beginning to do right now is a matrix of exactly what, who does what, when, where, and how, and then part of that matrix will be who is the backup to that person. So we absolutely will be developing that, and hopefully we won't hear about it this time.
Okay, um, committee? Uh, Ms. Myers?
Yes. Uh, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Good to have you. Uh, and I was wondering if you could tell us a little bit about yourself, since you're new and we haven't gotten to know you yet.
Well, thank you. I'd be glad to. I am actually a lifelong, proud to be a lifelong resident of Pensacola, um, and, and really honored to, to be a service to the city. Um, I started my career at Pensacola Junior College back when we had, I think, 500 computers, and I did a presentation at the President's Council about connecting to the network, and the response was, I think that sounds really good, but let's make sure this internet is a passing fad. So, tells you how fast and how quick, uh, uh, technology has grown and moved. Um, I spent a while there, and then I left. I had been with student group for about eight years, and left there, went back to Pensacola to help them with the security program, Pensacola State College now. Um, so my whole career, thank you, my whole career has been IT, and, and my passion, um, is, is truly IT management, because I, I really believe it's not the technology that's important, it's filling the needs, and, uh-
Okay. Uh, well, we're glad to have you here, and, uh, I just wanted to ask you a, a few basic questions about the organizational structure of the MI department. So are, are you like, what, what is your position exactly? What's it called?
It is called MIS Administrator.
Administrator, okay. And how many, uh, I, I assume that then that you're the top person?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so how many people do you supervise or who work under you?
I have about 16, um, that work, uh, pretty much directly. There's, as the current structure is, there's three, um, managers that handle certain divisions, and of course, there's people under there, under them. Um, but I have restructured a little bit until get hands-on thing, handle on things, uh, more people reporting directly to me, so I can understand what we're doing.
So all total, there's 16 employees beside yourself who work in MI, right?
I think, yes, and, and yes, not counting the, the scanners or some people, the EPS, some just contract folks.
Okay, do you mind, uh, telling us what the bu, budget is? I mean, I don't think we were giving out, were we giving out any budget material?
Yeah.
My page.
There's not, there's not a PowerPoint, but-
170-ish?
Yeah, 170, 169 to 178.
Okay, hold on for a minute. Okay, I see that.
Well, Ms. Myers is looking that up. Uh, what, who's your department head?
Who is, um, you mean, well, I mean, I've- Who is, you mean, well, I mean, I run the department. You mean?
Oh, okay. So you're a department head?
Yes, I am the department.
All right, that's...
So may I finish my line of questioning? Okay, I have the answer here. I found it in the budget, in terms of how much is budgeted for that department and the flow chart. So in your job description, you consider yourself a department head. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, Mr. Cosson, what is his position?
Public Information Officer.
Okay, and he works under you?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, welcome aboard, and I'm looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, same here.
Okay. Anybody else? Yeah.
Let me just go down the line.
That'd be fine, sure. Gerald?
Yes, I had a really quick question. And again, welcome aboard. Are you familiar, sir, with the MIS training program at George Stone?
At George Stone here?
At George Stone Technical Center here in the city of Pensacola?
Somewhat, yes, sir.
Before I retired, one of my responsibilities was placement of some of the students where they would get on-hand experience in computer repair and just the whole litany of other things that they were being trained to become familiar with. Will you have an opportunity to be one of those satellite training places? And if so, then we can, I'll do a couple of things and help you to connect with the officials out at George Stone. And we're not talking about taking on a whole class.
Sure.
But two or three students at a time. And I do realize the sensitivity of some of the information that comes through your department, that will come through your department. But as many training sites or opportunities for those students to get experience, as you can imagine, would only help to enhance their training.
Absolutely. And there's certainly a number of level opportunities that we certainly can use and take advantage of internships. Having come from Pensacola State College, I mean, the number one thing you hear is, I can't get a job because I don't have experience, can't get experience because I don't have a job. So absolutely, that's a valuable asset.
Wonderful. Because they have a program over there as well.
Yes, sir.
But I'll call either the principal or the curriculum coordinator at George Stone and have him give you a call and see what you guys can work out.
Excellent.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Barker? Yes, if I could clarify, because I know we had this discussion earlier today, and I know Paul is new to the organization. So I have to be careful. I'm not taking anything away from him. He is, in the scheme of things, he is an administrator with the city. He is over this division of MIS. But currently, he reports directly to Mr. Bill Reynolds, the city administrator.
Excellent.
And I know coming from the school, you might have been a department director here, is this administrator over the division of MIS. Just to clarify.
Nice cover there.
Thank you.
You've been indoctrinated.
He's new, he doesn't want to get on the record.
He doesn't know the shell game that they like to play.
No, no, we'll do editorial comments on that later. But it's, you get five stars and a $10,000 bonus for that.
I felt like I was safe, because you said, do I consider myself?
Does that take care of you, Mr. Gerald?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Mr. Dweeze?
Thank you, Mr. President, and welcome
Thank you.
to our, to our city. Not as a resident, but as part of the, your administrator job.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, and you've probably seen me thumbing back and forth, because I want to make sure. And I know that you, probably through osmosis, would have to be able to pick up a lot of the planning along the way. But I'm just referring back to a recent report that was done, and also the existing structure of MIS, as I understood it. Because there's two major changes in the budget, and I don't want Mr. Cosson to feel like I mean him any harm at this point. This is strictly a budget question. So it has to do with two new expenses that are incredibly large. And one of them, council is on page 176, and it's line item 9338, advertising. And it went from not having a budget at all to $172,500. The other question I have is on page 170, and it went from zero in 2010, the Public Information Office, to $273,700. So they appear to be new expenditures under this administration. But it seems to be a departure from what the mission of MIS actually is. When I look at your description on page 170, that commentary, and I realize, Mr. Jones, you didn't write this. You said you came after the budget was written. So there's probably someone else that helped with it that could answer some of these questions. But can you give me any perspective on, you know, the need of those two new expenditures? Why we now, as an internal service, because MIS is an internal service, functioning all the information that we attempt to gather and use as a city, why would we need to all of a sudden advertise? What's that change in perspective?
I'm going to actually defer to Derek, because he was involved in that process.
Right. And that's what I'm saying. I'm letting you off the hook right away, because you didn't write this.
Howdy, council members. I'll try to give you all the perspective I can. You know, essentially, the creation of the Public Information Office within MIS sort of serves, you know, kind of a dual role. The reason the mayor chose to locate it within MIS is because the mayor has a lot of things that he'd like to do on the technology front. There's a lot of things that he and I have discussed, you know, as far as increasing our public information efforts that involve technology, whether that's things with our websites, like a city hall blog or video production. So I work on a day-to-day basis very closely with both the mayor's office and MIS staff to accomplish some of those objectives. You know, to address the advertising line item that you mentioned, the largest portion of our advertising costs, or I should say, our retainer with our advertising agency, you know, is located within the Public Information Office, both because, you know, that, you know, what we're doing with Zimmerman is consistent with, you know, with that public information mission, but also because I am the member of staff that has been tasked with day-to-day management of that relationship. So if that gives you some perspective.
Not really. I'm trying to understand here, like on page 172, because your position is funded under the information management portion. And I'm just trying to understand, because I've had several folks ask, what is that office, first of all, because of the expense of it, that is a new expense? And, you know, what is its function? So I'm trying to see, under here, this whole definition, objectives, where that job fits, where that function fits. I mean, because if you're the administrator or the leader of the 16 people, that you would be to work, working directly with the mayor on MIS issues and information issues. I mean, we have a clerk, a city clerk, that manages the information of our city as far as, you know, public information and everything that's done at these meetings. And they've been over there with us this whole time, too, you know. So I'm trying to understand. It seems like a redundant service. I understand the web-based effort and the information effort, but I don't see the return on investment for that, you know, better access to information for the citizens. What's the description?
I think from my perspective, it's really, it's not as unusual as it may seem for some aspects. As what, anytime we present information, we develop information, or we give access to information, there's two aspects. There's the technology aspect, which is really designed to put it out there, to present it, and then there's the content. And where Derek works with our, we work very closely. We coordinate. He's in the meetings. A part of that is making sure that content's correct, making sure that we have, we're putting the right face out there, that we're appearing how we want to appear, we're saying the right things, the content is current. So there's that relationship that's absolutely key and very synergistic to what we're doing in MIS. And I think what you're seeing somewhere, and I think next year, I believe you'll see some changes in the definition, because really what we're doing is the IT, just by the social media, with all the things that happen, technology in and of itself is going through an evolution. And the services, MIS name truly came about because of the time when we were basically saying, we were hiding in the mainframe room, and we were coming and giving you reports. So that's what Management Information System was and is. But as you're seeing now, technology is just eating and everything, and the partnership or the synergy with the information is really key. Now, the aspect of it, that the writing, the mayor's, that work is still a relationship, but different. But as far as that actual producing the information and making sure it's correct is a key role in what we do.
Okay.
Mr. Dweeze, if I could, I was here at the beginning when they first got the PIO officer and that type of thing. But in truth, we lost, I think it's a position, a webmaster.
Yeah, I was gonna add a little background to that.
At the same time. So, you know, when you're restructured...
There's a webmaster budget in?
Right.
Is there two?
There is not. But when you, when you are reducing staff and that type of thing, that's what we were looking at. Derek came in as PIO, but he also had experience. The mayor was very interested in the web and renewing, redoing the web, which we have went through that whole process. They needed somebody in charge of that. Also, with what Paul said, it's interesting, he said it, and he wasn't even here. But the issue was the whole image to the outside for the city and how it looked. And of course, the electronic media was very important to the mayor. So, you know, Derek is really doing a couple of functions while we are in the process. And I believe you're still going to hire a webmaster at some point.
Yes, we are.
They're not on board yet. But Derek, right now, has been performing that function since the other person has left.
So it's budgeted, it's not filled?
It's not filled at this time. So, I mean, Derek's really been an asset, because it really helped out MIS. As you know, Sherry Posey filled in for quite some time until Mr. Jones was hired and doing things. So staff was just reduced quite a bit. The person who dealt with the web had left. The PIO came in, which happened to be Derek, who had experience with the computer. And so in a situation when you were just trying to fill positions, in order to get somebody there to fulfill that need, Derek filled it very well. And of course, that's not counting about his expertise at public information to the mayor. So then you have the advertising, when that came up, and where does that go? How do you spread that to the departments fairly and that type of thing? Is that the majority of that contract is in MIS department. The enterprises have their pieces that's spread out in the contract. The mayor's picking up a piece. We talked about Neighborhood Services picking up the piece. But the line share is in Derek's office, and he coordinates as it relates for the other departments of the city, the general contract, of course, working with the mayor's office and all that type of stuff. But he's been very valuable in assisting maybe some, in the MIS area, I call it, and maybe IT is what it's going to change to with Paul's input. But it has been ongoing, moving, developing process of where things are. But he's been very valuable to the MIS department.
Okay.
And continues to be that while the position is vacated.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. President, my concern, and I don't want to keep questioning Mr. Jones, because he obviously didn't write this, and I feel bad for doing that. So I just, I think there needs to be more commentary within this budget for us to understand this new direction that we're going in, the whole position of, or actually, the office of public information, because the citizens are paying an extra $446,200 for the advertising and for the information office. So that's image management, is what we've been told by the administrator. So I'd like to hear from the citizens as well. But I just feel that this is, this part of the budget is really short on explanation for spending almost half a million dollars of new dollars, when every other department has suffered budget cuts. So. And also, my concern with MIS, after reading that report and talking with Mr. Reynolds, is how far behind we are in some aspects with technology, that MIS has become the lifeblood of our city as far as capturing information and being able to use it and make statistical decisions. So I don't want to appear to be beating up on this new function that they've created with this administration, but that we understand what it's being used for, and if it's going to get to that goal that was set in that report that was done for us about MIS.
Well, let me just suggest something for discussion. And is that since this one is so light, and Mr. Jones hasn't had a chance to, you know, put his thumbprint on it, that this portion of the budget that we just told in advance, you know, until he gets a chance to go and do a rewrite workup, and I think he kind of senses many of the issues that we've got here, and maybe we can reflect that in the budget. It may not change the dollar amount a bit. It may be fleshed out a little bit more with explanation.
Certainly. Would you like a motion?
Oh, gosh. We've got a bunch of hands up out in the public now.
Okay. I'll wait. I won't make a motion right now, if you need one. So, I'm all done.
I would like to see the dollar amounts changed. As I go through here, the operating expenses have gone up since 2011, $400,000 approximately. Office of the Director has gone up $114,000, a little more. The Public Information Office, $154,700 approximately. Advertising has gone up from zero in 2011 to $2,500 in 2012, and now it's gone up $170,000 more in 2013. Other Personal Services was zero last year, and they've added another $109,000. And when I, when I look at these enormous increases, and I think about the folks, for instance, over there on Savanti Street, who are going to be without a library...
Well, Ms. Myers, let...
I think we need to look, I'm not satisfied, it just, I would like to see these numbers reduced.
Let me just take...
Besides giving him the opportunity to explain them.
Well, let me just have, take a stab at the thing on the advertising. Advertising contract has been signed. It's for a specific amount of money. That money is going to be spent. And what they've done is charged it off to the different departments relative to how much is being spent to support that department. Is that fair to say, Mr. Barker?
It is. And for the general departments that could not be identified for the general contract, it was put in the MIS department. Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Okay. So just because it comes out of this budget, doesn't mean that the money's going to be saved. It would be moved over to some of, this is just an accounting issue on that.
And, Mr. President, if I could, I think I can clarify that the big increase, one you have just mentioned, is the advertising. The other is office equipment, which is really capital equipment, that they're buying computer equipment. It's $200,000. And then the item that you mentioned in other personal services really came from extra personal services. If you recall, we had the auditor in from the FRS for the first time. We had to set up the new category of other personal services. So that dollar amount really just was shifted from 9125 to 9135. So your $400,000 is basically the advertising and the capital equipment. And I was thinking that, yes, the other one is the normal increase that they budget for all the software contracts and hardware maintenance contracts in 9357. So there's about three big items. Your contracts as it relates to increased software maintenance, capital equipment that they really, they had $55,000 in '12, and they went up to 232 in 2013. And the other is the advertising, and the president's exactly right about that. Contract's been signed. That's going to be charged somewhere and paid from somewhere. Contract's been signed, that's gonna be charged somewhere and paid from somewhere.
Okay. Yeah, I've got Dr. Pratt and then Mr. Gerald.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I just want to clarify my understanding, not a lawyer, but I think our attorney could speak to this as well, that the advertising contract has been signed there, no termination clauses in it. We, as a council, do have the power to say, we will only spend X dollars, and either that firm can walk away, or they can say, all right, we will reduce our fees, or we will reduce the buys, or something like that. It is not a done deal. It doesn't have to be in our budget. We can make changes as we, as a council, see fit. So it's not, if we change it here, it's gonna go somewhere else. We can take control and say, this is the amount we are willing to see spent. And just on the MIS issue that, you know, and it ties into the advertising, is that, you know, back in January or February, sort of about the same time, found out that the mayor had authorized $100,000 for advertising coming out of that existing MIS budget, and at the same time, we get the report that our MIS department is suffering, it doesn't have a lot of things, and I thought, and so we're taking money out of it. That's poor management, I thought. But, you know, we currently own the rights to the new logo if we choose to use it, and I mean, it is something, and I've talked to various people, how does that work? And we can say, here's the max we'll spend. Now, as you said, at some level, we will pay somebody some advertising fee, and whether it's written in this department or in, you know, whatever, building maintenance or something, we will pay it, but it is not a done deal in terms of, we have to give this firm this total that has been added up for us here. Thank you.
Okay. I thank you for that. Unless the lawyer's just dying to jump in, I'll acknowledge that you're probably right on that. I hope we won't do that, but, Mr. Gerald?
No, I have no comment at this time. I think the observations that are being made are well taken.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's let a couple from the public speak. Ms. Mack.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members, and bear with me, because I have a number of comments to make. I'm a member of the public, you know, forget my past as an elected official, I'm a member of the public. Public information to me is what I ask for. Public information is what the state says I am entitled to. Public information is not the propaganda that comes from the mayor's office. That's what you're paying for with the advertising, with a good bit of the Public Information Office. And I would observe that the good that this council does, that the dollars that you obviously have to approve for this, you do not get the benefit from. This council accomplishes things, but I have yet to see the news release from the Public Information Office that informs the public of the good that you do. You have to suffer from what the Pensacola News Journal chooses to print about you. Public information is what I, as a member of the public, want to hear, and I will tell you, I have gotten now to be one of the regulars making public information requests, and I will tell you, in recent weeks, the response to those has not been very timely, and if it does not get more timely, we're going to have some problems. Speaking to the amount of advertising, I think it is totally inappropriate that the bulk of the retainer, which is for the City of Pensacola, which is for advertising, which is not public information, it is propaganda, should be in the mayor's budget, period. You know, to me, the reason it's in MIS, you know, the bulk of it is in MIS, I know some is in Neighborhood Services for their uses, but let's face it, you know, most of the money is to sell the city, you know, which is great for economic development, but it is also to announce what the mayor does, and if that's what we're gonna do, which is fine, you know, that's what happens with, you know, chief executives. Let it be in his budget. Take it out of the public information budget, you know, a great, I know there's, you know, what, $50,000 in the mayor's? There should be a lot more of this $170-some-thousand in the mayor's budget. You know, if it's gonna be there, at least let, you know, let it show where it's supposed to be, where it's doing the good. Now, about contracts, about this Yaman contract. The Yaman contract, and, you know, it's a two-page contract, but it incorporates as a promise of their performance, you know, every word, every sentence, every item that they had in their proposal, which was accepted and is incorporated as part of the contract. There are a number of month, that contract was signed March 1st. There are a number of monthly reports that, they have a whole page that says accountability, and there are three or four monthly reports that they are supposed to have been submitting to the city, you know, from, you know, if this contract started in March, then there should have been one April 1st for March, May 1st for April, June 1st for May, and so on. I have put in public records requests for those items. Guess what? The last, and I got something of a semblance for my first request, but my request on, I think it was June 28th, for reports from April 1st, I was informed, those are not available. Now, I'm gonna read that as, oh, they haven't done their accountability. So you talk about a contract that is not being fulfilled, you have the ammunition there because they have not fulfilled that part of the contract. They are not producing those reports. Either that, or I'm not getting what I'm asking for is public records. Thank you very much.
And, you know, and if we're not getting those reports, I agree with you, Ms. Mack, we should be, and that was a continuing issue with the previous public relations advertising firm we employed. And then when they did give us the reports, it was bare bones. It had really no real information that you could use out of it. Ms. Dubusson.
Thank you. First, I want to acknowledge that Mr. Cosin did do yeoman's work during a time that the staffing was not adequately staffed up for what the city was doing, both in transition and in growth. Having said that, Mr. Cosin and I speak rather frequently, both by email and by telephone, because as Ms. Mack indicated, some citizens would like to get the whole truth, and so we make public information requests, or we call with simple questions. And so it is critical to me that whatever monies are put into the MIS budget go towards managing the information systems, not spinning the information, not projecting an image, not trying to convince us that what we're reading is the best thing that can be done, but providing the information. There are meetings for which agendas are never posted because no one has the time to do it. There are meetings for which misinformation has been posted because the incorrect process has been applied by staff members because they haven't been trained. There are calendar clicks that don't work, and when you start talking about economic development, when you're talking to a company that is five states away, and you tell them, just go to the website, and when they pull up the website, the last information they have on there is from back in March, when it is June, they don't think you're a very technologically advanced community. So in terms of our needing to step up our game, we do. In terms of needing to get our equipment to the level that needs to be there, we do. However, in terms of how our personnel are applied, I really believe that we need to get people employed doing the business of transferring information effectively between council members, staff members, and citizens, not in making it look good. Mr. Cosin regularly sits and reviews blogs. That is very nice. However, I do not feel that responding and posting an opinion on a blog is as important as having a clear calendar posted and an agenda posted. I also have made public information requests, which have taken weeks because of the process that's in place in which individuals have to go through and clear their stuff. If we can't get an automatic review of email to shorten that process, we're really messing up, because you folks don't have 20 hours a week to go through and check your email. There should be a more automatic manner. Beyond that, the monies that are going into this image rebranding are lovely from the mayor's point of view. There are quite a few citizens who disagree. There are quite a few citizens who are quite content with the image of Pensacola being a historically heritage-oriented community that is stepping up to the 21st century. And portraying this as a wave with a bar floating in the middle of it is not doing a lot for a lot of people. For those who see it as an MBO or a rooster's head, it's not giving a message that is any more important or appealing than seeing the five flags. So I question this whole contract, the whole direction, and I would say that from a policy point of view, if we're taking MIS for meaning providing basic, clear information and record-keeping to the community to spinning, then that is a policy change, and that should have come from council, not from the administration. Thank you.
Okay. But, Mr. Wallace, I've taken two from the public. I promised Mr. Johnson. Yes?
And one more thing, I walked away with that saying. Mr. Hall, I respectfully request that when Ms. Myers or any member of council is speaking and giving their opinion, no matter how much you may want to override that thought, that you let them finish it, because some individuals are being allowed to give anecdotal information, but you seem to repeatedly be interrupting the same ones, and it's gotten quite obvious from the audience sitting out here that there's a pattern, and maybe if you could just breathe three times the next time you think that you want to cut someone off, it would really help all of us. Thank you.
Okay. Always willing to help. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. President. Mine'll be quick. I understand that the website is gonna go through another change. Is that true? Mr. Jones?
I'll try to speak to that if I can. There are no plans for that as of this moment. As part of the branding effort, we have had some conversations with our ad agency about changing at least the look of the website. They haven't moved past that stage at this point. We haven't seen any estimates from them, or, you know, any substantial discussions about, you know, what changes, you know, we may want to make, but it has, the topic has come up.
Would that be over and above their existing contract? Do we know if they do changes to that website?
By my reading of the contract, website redesign services would not be included in the scope, so that would be something additional that they'd have to bring forward.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wallace.
I just want to get some clarification, because I'm got confused normally about the public information, because normally, when I try to get information, I sometimes call the city clerk or some department. Now, you're talking about this money in public information. That means that as a citizen, I can call your department and get the information I need? And also, in the same token, we got to look at the dynamic of our citizen in Pensacola. There's lots of senior citizens in the city of Pensacola that do not have access to a computer. So, I mean, how are we as a citizen, how are you gonna relate this public relation budget to where I can get the information, relevant to me, and who do I call? Do I call the city clerk? Do I keep calling the department head? Who do I call to get this public information from? I mean, how are you gonna enhance my ability to get the information I need as a citizen? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Are we ready to discuss how we might want to make this motion? I know that you said we're gonna hold this in abeyance. I know that Ms. Myers said she'd like to adjust...
Well, yeah, but Brian also wants to speak too.
Okay, I'll wait then. I'll wait.
Thanks. I suggest that Ms. Dubusson's comments be considered and really utilized in this way. I think that we've done a good job in, or we definitely have improved our access for citizens and a reporting format methodology for certain infrastructure kind of defects or breakdowns via our 3-1-1. That's, I think that's a great step forward, and while I'm not going to, I'm not going to respond to everything that Ms. Dubusson said, but I'm going to share what I think is a strong message or request that she is providing that is, I've heard from other people, is could we now begin to take that 3-1-1 sort of strategy, and let's start allowing citizens, first of all, to get immediate, real-time, accurate information, but could there be a way then, I've seen this done, where they can choose from keywords? We can create a legend. Is your problem parks-related? Is it service-related? Is it just various parts within the city's provision of services that provides a much easier roadmap to, and then to get information? She's shaking her head no, because I missed, obviously, I missed the point, but still, I think my request is valid, is that this level of efficiency that is beginning to be applied on our 3-1-1 format, because we do have many people that have just basically relinquished using the phone for interacting with the city.
I can speak to that for a second, if you'd like. You know, right now, for example, if you want to enter a 3-1-1 ticket online, and you go to 311pensacola.com or cityofpensacola.com/311, you have a couple of different options. If you, you know, if you don't really know how to describe your issue, or you're not really sure what it would fall under, you know, you can select a general option, you know, enter in your information and just, you know, write out a description, or you can select by category. And for the most part, the category selection is more departmental-based. It does break down a little bit further than departments, but one of the things that I would like to do, and we, over the last few months, have made some software upgrades in the background that are gonna allow us to do some new cool stuff with 3-1-1, but one of the things that I would like to do is, as you said, sort of simplify that selection list, because not everybody knows what, you know, you know, not everybody knows who is responsible for, you know, fixing their sidewalk necessarily, or picking up their, you know, their trash if it didn't get run. So, you know, it could certainly use some improvement, and that's one of the things that I've been looking at as we sort of make some upgrades to the 3-1-1 backend.
How's your pattern of use on the 3-1-1 in the computer format? Give us an idea.
How does it compare to telephone?
Yeah, no, frequency. Is it showing its free use, or is it something as pitiful as five times a week?
Yeah, just, well, in general, and actually, one of the things, I don't recall if it made it into the State of the City address, or if it was just in the budget message, but hopefully, over the next few months, these, some of these changes that I was talking about, will allow us to provide council with sort of some monthly reports on 3-1-1, both usage and then, you know, what those calls are about, and specifically, one of the upgrades that we've made recently will allow us to break that down by council district. So we'll be able, in the near future, to give each of you a report that says, you know, these were the calls that came in from people in your district, this is what they're calling about. But in general, since we launched the 3-1-1 service last July, traffic reports, tickets, whatever you want to call them, have pretty steadily increased each month. There was one, I think it was December, that they, was the first month that they didn't increase over the last month, and it's probably due, you know, to the holidays. But, you know, for example, most months, it is the largest month on record, you know. This last month, we had had more 3-1-1 tickets entered than any month before, and then...
Like what?
I think the total for June was around 1,300 tickets. The, I'd say, wide majority of those, at this point, are entered by phone. The web portal is not nearly as utilized as the phone portal, you know, whether that's because folks just aren't aware of it, or they prefer, you know, the telephone usage, I'm not sure, but we have, you know, if you've seen them at any of the city facilities, you've entered in, but we do have, we did make up some table tents and magnets and some other things that have both, you know, obviously, the 3-1-1 number and then the web address to try and get that word out, and, you know, like I said, usage is... And, you know, like I said, usage is increasing, but telephone usage right now is more prominent.
And I certainly would like to say one thing. You know, one of my marching orders is to get information out and to make sure this happens. And if it's not usable and it's not user-friendly, it's of no value. And we do that by accountability, by checking, by connecting with the users, what's happening. And we will, when I said we're in good shape, there's a lot of foundational things. There's a lot of work to do. There's a lot of areas that absolutely, positively need improvement. I am, we're developing a culture of service excellence, and we will develop that and we will be that. But that's based on usage. It's not based on our technology.
Well, I know, and Ms. Dubasson's about ready to have.
Well.
Come on up. One minute, please. We've got two more things to do.
If council wouldn't personally reflect that there are things about people, I wouldn't worry about the correct information being associated with my name, okay? Number one. I am not talking about 3-1-1 at all. I am talking about if I want to know what's going on in the Mayor's Urban Renewal Advisory Committee, I click on that committee. It says they're going to meet on such and such a date. The agenda is not attached. We get to the meeting. No one sitting in the audience has seen the agenda. There are no copies there because it was never put out. Now, if that is the Mayor's Urban Renewal staff that's not doing it, or if it is that it's not automatically done when it's circulated to the committee, I don't know. That's the kind of corrective action that I'm looking for. I'm looking for the way that the citizens get the information in advance of a decision being made so that they can bring to the council good information before a decision is made instead of winding afterwards. We keep talking about, you know, how do we get into a proactive space? I know I'm the level one of the mean, negative naysayers of this community. The reason I get up and speak is because there are 100 people calling me saying, "Do you have this information?" They don't know how to get it. And so what I'm asking this council is, in your budget, if what we're really wanting is to get out good, clean information about this community to the citizens and to any prospective company citizen, new citizens or other organizations that might want to interact with us, put all of our energy into getting it right up front, spinning it. I mean, I used to do catering, and I could provide brunch, dinner, or snacks, depending on what the customer wanted. And if I ran out of meat and potatoes, I could throw out enough little aliments and side things that they never realized there were no meat and potatoes. But let me tell you, when I billed them, the person paying for the bill would say, "You didn't put out the meat and potatoes you told me were going to be on that table." That's what I'm talking about. We need the basic information, what questions are coming up before council, what issues are being discussed, by which department, who do you go to, what timeline is it going to happen, and how do we give positive input? If that opportunity were provided to those of us who are trying, you might see a synergistic energy come out of this community like you wouldn't believe. But instead, we're relegated to raising our hand and hoping that we have an opportunity to get up and quickly throw it out in the middle of a public conversation because the opportunity is not there in advance. So please, look at making the management information service about serving information to the public, not about spinning it so someone looks like they're doing good, which is what we just heard about 3-1-1.
Thank you. Now, I know, Ms., you've got your hand up, but I promised Ms. Duesch before.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Dubasson, for speaking up. I think Mr. Jones deserves our patience here and our deference. He came on board. This budget was written. And the reason I say that, I went back and looked at Mr. Reynolds' communication to us on February 8th, and I just want to read a little bit of it because it says the urgency of this matter. It says, "Please find the attached report from H2 Performance Consulting, who was asked to conduct a review of our MIS department. It is a sobering report. The summary describes the organization as being on life support. It is critical that we address the issues identified, but nothing is insurmountable." And it goes on to talk about that, that he spent a great deal of time trying to get to know the employees, and invariably, it came back to MIS. And he said, "It's not employee-driven. It's not that at all. It's managerial, structural, and technical." Mr. Jones is on board. He's ready to go out and hit the street with this and work on it. So it's structural and technical. So my concern, if you look at the report, one page that it talks about, it gives a zero to three-month and then all the way up to 12 to 24-month solutions. And this is on page six of that 79-page report. And I'm happy to email it to Elaine, to email it to the mayor, to you. I can't send it directly to you. You have it?
Just to comment, I have it, and we are on track with everything that's in this. And I am totally behind this, and I think the processes and the thinger in place are absolutely key.
Okay.
And you will see a new help desk installation. You will see the government's board established.
So that page, you're addressing all 10 of those critical items?
Absolutely positive.
Okay. And if we could hold this, my motion is then to hold this budget in abeyance until Mr. Jones has an opportunity to directly address the advertising addition of that to the budget and to explain the Public Information Office to the citizens and within this budget commentary. And then just assurances that the dollars are there to address these infrastructure issues because the things that Mr. Reynolds cited are quite desperate and it's investment in this department, not in the image that we portray, but the actual department. So that's my motion.
Second. Okay. Ms. Myers?
Well, I think that.
There was a second. That was your motion, correct?
Yes.
What was your, I'm sorry.
To hold it in abeyance until the advertising and the Public Information Office are addressed within the budget and also to address this report of 79 pages and how we're in line with allocating funds to those solutions.
Okay. So that's your motion. Mr. Gerald seconded it. That's what's up for discussion now. All the previous discussion is out, so if you have any discussion on that. Okay?
Well, actually, I was trying to have an opportunity to say something, but anyway.
I'll give you the opportunity after the vote, if that's okay, Ms. Myers.
Well, a number of citizens, including myself as a council member, have concerns about the type of information that's being disseminated with our tax dollars. And some of the information that's coming out of this department, and Mr. Jones needs to know this, because I'm not allowed to speak to you, sir, without permission of the mayor. You may not know that. Okay? So I just can't get on the phone and ask you questions. And that's why I want to bring this to your attention, because I have a limited opportunity to get information from you. As Ms. Dubasson brought out, Ms. Mack brought out, I also have concerns about what the MI department is being used for, and that needs to be addressed. Is it being used primarily to give out useful and accurate and truthful information to the citizens? Or is some of it being used to give out propaganda primarily for the mayor? And also being used to disparage citizens who make remarks on blogs or letters to the State Attorney General's office in a disparaging way? I think it's inappropriate for a city employee to post on blogs disparaging information regarding citizens or to send press releases to the press that hold citizens who make comments up in a false light.
Yeah.
So I want you to be aware of this concern because, under the mayor's policy, I can't call you up and discuss things with you. So if I don't do it now, I have to get permission from the mayor to talk to you. I don't know if you know that's his policy or not.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So we've got a motion. That motion actually is an amendment.
Amendment, yes.
To the main motion. And just to bring everybody back up to speed here, is the main motion is that city council approved the mayor's fiscal year 2013 proposed budget, and there was a fairly significant amendment earlier in the day. This is the second one.
I'd just like a little clarification in that this motion highlights the advertising money. Is it, and I guess I'll support the motion, but I think that possibly it would be beneficial for the advertising conversation to be a broader conversation as well, I mean, as opposed to just this. I mean, I think that we could benefit from a full discussion of what we're actually going to be getting out of this advertising money. It's come up multiple times, but so I'll support it, but I just.
What is the motion?
Restate the motion, please.
That we hold this budget for MIS in abeyance until we get further information from Administrator Jones on the addition of advertising into the budget and also a commentary on what the Public Information Office is to do and justify that budget expenditure, as well as address the 79-page MIS report from H2 Consulting and how funding is in support of curing those issues within that report.
Okay. So the motion is just about this particular budgetary item?
Yes.
And no other budgetary item?
Just MIS.
Okay. I want to make sure it's about MIS and not something else.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, if you're in the room, you have to vote. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Now, now that that issue's over with, I do want to address one thing. If it's in order to apologize to Ms. Myers for cutting her off, certainly offer up that apology. If you noticed over the two days of this budget thing, there's been very few places where I've actually inserted any opinion at all upon my part, is that if I interrupt somebody, it's either because they've gotten so far off-topic, you know? And one of the things that I'm obligated to do is, during these meetings, is to keep things germane to what the topic is. And so that's one thing. And the other one is, is I don't want to criticize anybody's opinion, even if it differs from mine. And many times, you won't know if that opinion does differ from mine, but it's got to be in the right context. And I was just trying to point out, because you were putting in a lot of energy, Ms. Myers, into that point about the advertising. And my real point was, in trying to correct it, is you don't just make that go away because it's not in the MIS budget. So I was just trying to shape the argument there.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I'm delighted. And sir, the sooner the better would be best, okay? Because we do want to get this budget out the door, all right? And welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay. We've got, we've got two more items to do, and I'm really kind of dreading going into this Penny for Progress item because you may have heard me say earlier today that we'd been through eight and nine-hour meetings on the last $200,000 of a budget for the outside agency funding. I am telling you the truth. I sat through a 14 and a half hour meeting on pennies for progress a few years ago. 14 and a half hour meeting, no breaks, no dinner breaks, no lunch breaks, 14 and a half hours. And so these are the types of things that are really important to people, members of council, things where they can feel like they can get their hands around, the public really understands these things well, fire trucks, parks, stuff like that. Well, one of the things I just want you to remember, our options are kind of getting shorter. The fact that this ends in 2017, and we've already promised money, some of this money's been promised out since back in '07. And it, what we're able to do is, because there's been people in departments been waiting for years for this to finally materialize and been making plans around that. So I just, I just hope that this goes very smoothly and doesn't get too emotional. Mr. Barker?
Thank you, Mr. President and members of city council. I'll try to go through this quickly as I can, so if it looks like I'm rushing through and you want me to slow down, I'll be glad to slow down. The authorization for the levy is the Florida statutes 212.0552. It's controlled by referendum. Our current penny for progress is at 1%. And there's the historical dates of when we have voted on that. The current penny for progress, it ends December 31st, 2017. It can be used for those purposes there. Infrastructure is defined as those bullets outline there. Authorized use of the proceeds are listed here. I won't go into a lot of detail. You've seen these slides last year when I did it, so that's why I'm going through them.
Mr. Barker, on that expiring on December 31st, 2017?
Yes, sir.
That would be the penny that's collected up through that time. Is there any time reserved on how long we can hold that money before it has to be spent?
No, sir. But I don't want to give you any hopes that money, current projections, is already spent. Remember, we're doing this over the 10-year, seven months that we're there, so it's already been obligated. Now, if additional collections come in over what we projected, of course, we would have additional funds. That's what the tax applies to. Just a point here, I like to always show this slide to council. You notice when we started this back in 1993, that the city's part of the revenue was 19.47% and the county was 80.53%. Based on the most recent information we received from the state, the city is now at 15.7% of the revenue and the county's 84.30. That's mainly due to population changes within the county. Revenue adjustments, these are showing you my projections all the way throughout fiscal 2018, which is really through December 31st, 2017. Penny for Progress for '13, those projects are outlined in the budget. This is where we plan on spending the money. We had talked about the Neighborhood Initiative Program 25,000 being in there the other day, and that is outlined there. Some parking lot refurbishment at Station 1 for $30,000. Some athletic facility and community improvements at the Vickery Center and Malcolm Young Center. Public Works, part of their sidewalk program, $350,000. And the pavement management program of $500,000. Mr. Garza spoke to both of those today. Capital equipment, as you're aware, the general fund capital equipment, along with the tennis and golf course, comes out of the penny for progress. In the original, there was money identified for this that council had approved, and we've maintained that throughout the years. Those are the capital items we will be purchasing. Future year allocations for police vehicles are funded through 2017. Sidewalk improvements are funded through 2016. Pavement management, the piece of pavement management that comes from Penny for Progress is funded through 2015. The other piece comes from local option gas tax. The Neighborhood Initiative Program is funded through 2016, and capital equipment is funded through fiscal 2018. And I do want to point out that, you know, many of the projects were moved forward when we began this, and then the last two projects recently were moved forward, which was the two community centers, and the money was moved forward for those. So the importance of that last slide that I was showing is that's really all the money you have obligated through 2017, with the understanding that if the county who controls whether another election will occur or not, usually, they do that a few years ahead. So hopefully, they're planning an election somewhere in 2015 or '16 for the extension, although it really, the collection for that will not occur into fiscal '18, January of '18. But usually, they do two or three years ahead of time for a referendum vote of the electric in Scambia County. But if you have any questions about the particular items on Penny for Progress, I'll be glad to.
We'll start with Ms. Myers.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Well, first of all.
Microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. If you could send this to me.
It's out there.
Oh, it is?
Yes. It was sent last night with the others. Is that correct, Yvette? Just want to make sure.
Okay. Because I don't think I could even see this with a magnifying glass.
Oh, you mean the actual chart?
Yeah. Yeah. All of this.
The pages in here.
Yeah. All of these pages here with all these numbers on them.
Yvette, if we send those, will they be bigger?
I can make it bigger on screen.
Okay. We'll send it to you.
Doesn't matter what size it is.
We'll send you page 97 through 101.
Okay. Great. Thank you. The parks, is there, used to, you had money allocated. The parks, is there, used to you had money allocated for each park or some of the parks?
And I know you can't see it, but yes, it's on there.
It is on there?
By part, yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, I'll just have to wait until I can see it.
Okay.
Sorry.
There's nothing for this year for the parks?
There's nothing?
All gone.
For all your park improvements, they, there are probably carryover funds for projects that have not been completed through fiscal 12, but there is no funding for parks all the way out through 2018. So your last funding for that, now, there is for your athletic facilities and community resource centers, but that's only a few items in fiscal year 13.
Last year, we had $100,000 for ADA improvements.
You did.
Did we have any funds allocated for ADA improvements this year?
Yes, ma'am.
And where would they be, under Public Works or?
You didn't have them in the penny for progress. You had them in the risk management department. We put $100,000 in, and yes, there's $100,000 in for 13.
Okay, all right. I was thinking it was in the penny for progress. Okay, well, I will look at this when you get it to me, so I can put it in a larger print.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'll be glad to do it.
Ms. DeWese?
Thank you, Mr. President. And if we could go back one page on your presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. The ones that you've said sidewalk improvement is not going to be funded in 2016, and also the PCIP funds, I know that it's half from here and half from another portion of the budget. And Councilman Hall just mentioned that in times before we actually had this funding, that you made plans accordingly for where you would get that sort of funding. And the need for that partnership with the neighborhoods is not going to simply go away, nor is the need for sidewalks. I think that's one of the biggest issues in District 3 is sidewalks. So I was not here before. There are some council members that may be able to address it, but you know, what, how are we going to, as a council, be able to address those needs after 2016? Where would they have been funded from and what will be induced?
Let me first speak about the general fund capital equipment. That, before we had the first local option sales tax vote, that was budgeted in the general fund, so certain, and it was about a million to a million and a half when you consider police, fire, public works, and all the general fund departments. So money would have to be identified in the general fund for that. Now, for the sidewalk improvements, all the others could be funded through general funds, so let me make that clear first. Everything can be funded in the general fund. Money would have to be identified for that. But some suggestions is your sidewalk improvements, your pavement management program could be funded through local option gas tax. Of course, that's going to reduce what you're paying on the others. So any that you're looking at is going to affect expenditures already there unless council wants to raise revenue in order to get these. So that's why it is important, I think, to have election in 15, 16 timeframe, so we see if the citizens still want to continue the tax levy. And if, if they do, then that will give us an idea if funds are going to be available for the future.
Okay. And my only other thing, and I think I'm going to risk mastering the obvious here, but there's probably not a long conversation, because almost $17 million was spent last year with the rearranging of the penny for progress, and there's just a little bit over $2 million this year, and then it just goes on down to about $315,000 for the end in 2018. And my concerns, and I'm not even beating up on the police department, I understand completely why we would have to fund cruisers for the police department, because it's a 24-hour, seven-days-a-week service. But the concerns I want to point out to council is what I brought up earlier about fire apparatus and neighborhood services. There's not even money in this for lawn mowers or any maintenance equipment for our 94 and 95 parks at this point. So that's my next question, is where are we going to start funding those?
And I know it's small print, and I'm sorry.
Okay.
But if you look on page 101?
Okay.
In line item 245?
Yes. Total capital equipment?
Yes. So like that $600,014 and on through there, it's 600?
Okay.
We move that up based on their request to the department.
So as needed?
Yes.
So if a pumper broke, you could go and replace it?
Well, not so, I think he's okay. He mentioned through the end of the loss for those.
Right.
But some of the command vehicles, I think he calls them, and that type of thing, based on what the garage recommends, we would move money from there up there for those. The police, all pretty well satisfied on throughout the loss period.
Right, they're fine.
But I, and we went over this with the chief when we discussed his budget, that he felt for the bigger apparatus, that they were okay, as he mentioned today through 18. But any type of lawn equipment and that type of thing, and I'm sure we would have to, have to buy some. But remember, we've outsourced a lot of that. So a lot of that equipment we used to have to buy, the vendor is providing that now.
Part of the price?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. And then, I think that was my only other thing I needed to point out. And my concern too for council is what I talked about, about the funding of the fire department, Station 3. And you will never hear me mention this again. I carried the emotion for last year, urgently trying to get council to understand what was being spent. That was a known need for this city since Ivan. Not as critical as Station 6, but that's one thing with the transition of governments and mayors and council members, is that those details get lost, and that was an unfunded need, not readily available, right in front of council to evaluate. And the breathing apparatus funding was moved when that grant came through, and we've missed several opportunities to fund that fire station. It was built in 1968. It has mold issues. It has water intrusion issues. It is, quite honestly, unconscionable that we have our firefighters living in there for a third of their life. I mean, you know, it was minimized by someone on the mayor's staff as it's not economic development for three people. Why spend that much money? And that, that to me, as well, is unconscionable. So I don't know where we're going to find the funding for that. I hope Mr. Reynolds can, can some way figure that out. But you know, that's, that's our job as council, is to make sure we're appropriating things in the appropriate places, and public safety is our number-one job as a government. That's why people live in the city. So although it is within District 3, and it's the only improved building in District 3, there's, the rest is just parks and a few sidewalks here and there, it is in serious sore repair. And it services the airport, it services District 1, it services parts of District 2, it services District 4. So everyone at this table should be concerned about that. And I just want you to keep that in mind, and maybe we can get creative on how we might do that. Maybe if I asked for a rec center, no harm intended, I might have fared better last year. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Gerald.
Thank you, Mr. President. First question, the penny for progress funds are available for renewal in, what is it, 2016 or 2017?
This, well, the vote can occur any time to renew it. Usually, like I was saying, you might have been out of the room, usually it would occur between around 15 or 16. But the funds actually, we stopped receiving the funds as of December 31, 2017, for this, for this penny for progress.
Okay, because perhaps it goes without saying that the penny for progress funds have been a wonderful addition to the city business, and it allows opportunity. And I would not want us to wait until the last minute to begin an aggressive campaign to educate the city, the citizens in both the city and county, because it benefits both agencies. And with all the advertising and marketing dollars that we've talked about today, I would suggest that we coordinate with the county and begin a vigorous campaign to encourage the citizens to look at renewal, because without those funds, there are a lot of things we wouldn't be able to do. And, and I'm hearing comments, and we'll, we'll help you get that community center, that resource center. We'll work with you on that.
Library Resource Fund, right?
Absolutely. Sounds good to me. But you know, it's something that we want to take on a serious note and begin our planning and not let those dollars go away. And I think citizens would be supportive, but I would encourage us to do it at a time that it's, it, I would hate to see it clash with an election year, and we have an opportunity to kick it around as a, but if, on the off years, if we're doing Congress or other general-type elections, but I would just seriously encourage us to begin to think about the renewal process and to, we'll be in a position to get feedback from citizens and hear what they're thinking, and encourage ourselves to be proactive in this matter and begin to plan for a renewal. And the last thing I want to ask is, and I don't see it a lot, but I do notice those rather large signs that the county uses to acknowledge the projects that they do. What do we use? Do we have a smaller sign or?
Well, and where there is a plaque, it's usually on the plaque.
It's on the plaque.
If it was paid for penny for progress during the construction, there usually is a sign that says that it's out there. And for the equipment, you'll notice on a lot of the city vehicles, it will say...
Purchased by?
By, yeah, right.
Okay, okay. So I have seen them, I just wasn't sort of paying attention. But I would encourage us to give some serious thought to that and begin a marketing campaign, if you will, to convince the citizens that this is something that's important to them because it provides those perks and additional things in our communities, and we would not want to lose that. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thought about interrupting you and cutting you off on, on that thought, but I decided to let you finish it. I think that would probably be a great idea, but it's against the law.
Yes, that's right. Oh, really?
Yeah, it's, it's against the law. Back when the penny for progress campaign was running before, it was not against the law.
Right.
But there was some sort of intervening vote somewhere along the way in the state of Florida.
That's correct.
And there was a court ruling that, that came out that you can use no public funds to either advocate for or against any type of petition, petition item.
Okay, well, in that case, since it's against the law, then we won't coordinate it ourselves. We'll just encourage people to do it.
Okay.
You're absolutely correct, Mr. President, that piece of legislation came out of Tallahassee the year before the charter was being considered, so there was nothing the city could do in the way of advertising one way or the other, and it applies to this as well.
Word of mouth will suffice.
I know the county used to advertise.
And it gives me, Councilman, it gives me no joy to say that.
Okay. Dr. Pratt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just looking at this, and I'd just like a little bit of information. So we've added $180,000 in projects to Neighborhood Services, the new roof at Vickery and some lighting at Roger Scott. Where did that money come from in the magic LOST pots?
What line items are you speaking?
Um, it's somewhere near like 66 or something, you know, I get sort of lost.
Need a magnifying glass?
68 and 65. Those weren't in the plan from last year, and I was just wondering where that came from. And then, while you're in that general area, we had on, well, last year, it was line 63, the Scott Athletic Complex was going to get $355,000 that, and I can't double-check, and East Pensacola Heights was going to get 500. Were those sacrificed for the community centers?
Let me, let me take the questions and respond back to you where those came from, because it could have been part of exactly what you said. It could have been part of the 12 reallocation or 13. Now, if Evette knows that answer, I'll let her go ahead and respond to it.
Well, I know for the Scott Athletic Complex and actually also Exchange Park, they were moved up.
Okay.
So they would, if you look in your 12, the 12 current, that you're going to see that amount there.
Oh, yeah, I see that, okay. But then, you know, I guess one of the things that I've heard, you know, internally is that, that Mr. Barker has these pots of money somewhere, and every once in a while, $180,000 appears, and I'm like, wow!
My predecessor used to have tomato cans, everybody said. So what are mine, pots of money? I got that. Okay, it went from tomato cans to pots, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's getting more, a lot, you know, inflation. And then, you know, I just, I guess in the sense of, the question was asked, you know, what happens if a lawnmower breaks? I guess there's money somewhere slushy in here. And then also, on the police vehicles, my understanding is that it's a, you know, an estimate in here, and then the central garage says, okay, you have so many vehicles that you're allowed to replace. At what point do we get a report of that, and how much is ending up being carried over each year?
We actually, at budget time, look at, have the garage look at each of the vehicles, give recommendations, then it's made. But from time to time, between the time the purchase actually happens, there could be a car accident that totals the vehicle or something like that, so that model wouldn't get replaced, and they would pick the next highest priority. So that happens from time to time. But generally, what they give us at budget time is reviewed by the garage, and just before the purchase, the final list is determined, and then those vehicles are done. We historically stay within the same number. So if it were five marked, it's going to be five marked. If it's 11 unmarked, it's going to be 11 unmarked. But that priority is really set right before the purchase, depending on what's needed.
Okay. And, and so, I mean, each year, I assume that, I assume for good planning, we, we guess high and we come in under budget. There's some contingency in there.
Yeah, you mean as far as the total dollar amount for the total purchase?
Right, right.
Yes. I think maybe the last couple of years, and those dollars just roll back in, if there's under expenditure there, back into the police department. We just carry it forward.
Okay. All right, because I'm trying to find where your pots are, if that's one of our pots where that $180,000 came from. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, and Mr. Barker may need to help me out on this just a little bit, but as far as that particular tomato can there, it's my recollection from back when I first started on, on council, that all the money for LOST, penny for progress, we already had, we had gone out and borrowed the money, and we were making more on the interest than we were having to pay on the debt service. And so it worked out to kind of be a good thing, but it also gave us the ability to reach forward a little bit and pull some, some projects forward. Is that?
That, you, you've captured it just perfectly.
Okay, okay. So being here a while has had some advantages, I guess. Mr. Johnson? Mr. Spencer?
I'm fine.
Anybody else? Ms. Myers?
Yes, I just wanted to ask Mr. Barker a question. I voted to, against keeping the millage rate at where it is right now, because I wanted the opportunity to ask you a question. If, if we went up on the millage rate a little bit, can you use, can you earmark those funds for a certain project? Is that legal?
Well, the millage can be used for anything, anything the council wants to.
So we, we could actually earmark it for a certain project, say, putting sidewalks on Burgess Road or...
Yes.
Doing the, the projects that Councilwoman DeWese is interested in or...
Burgess Road.
But, but, no, what I'm, you know, you know, the, the citizens have consistently voted in favor of the LOST funds. And the reason I think they do is because they can see, actually see, the results and of what they voted for. And I think if you put an idea out there to the citizens that we're going to increase the millage rate a little bit, and this is specifically what it's going to be used for, I think that that is palatable. So I just want to throw that idea out as, if we don't do it this year, we may need to next year, but to earmark it for certain projects. I didn't know if that was legal or not, and that's why I wanted to ask Mr. Barker, so...
Yeah, and I'm not, that's a CFO's legal opinion.
CFO legal opinion.
That's not an attorney's legal opinion. But any, any, my understanding is, any... But any, my understanding is, any governmental purpose that can be used.
Mr. Geraldson, Dr. Wu.
Thank you, Mr. President. And now that I've been informed that the law has changed somewhat, it occurs to me that it does not limit neighborhood associations to campaign for the renewal. So they're free to do whatever they want to do. But if it limits governmental agencies from any kind of a campaign, then I'm very happy to see them here. So now that they know the rules of the game as well, and they can proceed in any shape, form, or fashion that they desire. But is it illegal for us to encourage them to do so?
No.
Okay, you're encouraged.
As long as you do it in the sunshine.
Yes. You're encouraged. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Dr. Wu. Okay. Public? Yes, ma'am.
Just very quickly, all right, Mr. Geraldson, we're ready. And also, I did want to ask Mr. Barker, we noted that there were $0 allocated for park improvements. Does that mean we won't have any park improvements, or will that money come from somewhere else?
I think major park improvements, currently, there is no money allocated in Penny for Progress. Now, ongoing maintenance and that type of thing certainly is, as Mr. Garza went through today. But any major improvements that you've seen in the parks, that funding is not available from Penny for Progress. If, Ms. Myers, as she suggested, you know, if you want to go up to millage and earmark it for a particular project, there's nothing wrong with that, and it could certainly come from increases in millages or, but generally speaking, the track that we've been on, we've spent the Penny for Progress money for park improvements until the vote to re-up it, whenever that happens, and the county controls that.
Ms. Boyd?
Question for Mr. Barker?
Yes.
And the information that I received about six weeks ago from Yvette, that doesn't affect those funds, those dollars that were unspent in those five?
Right, I was looking at new projects.
Okay.
But any carryover balances or balances in 12 that we have are still there.
Okay, so we're safe. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, President and Council. That is sad that we do not have any money for our parks, but we had a increased beautification and remodeling of Dr. E.S. Cobb, and I think it was $88,000 went into that. But previously, we had lighting out there. We've lost our lighting. And right now, as it stands, it's very dark out there. And we have teenagers that are hanging out at 1:00 a.m. in the morning, and the police has had to come out to let them know, nor do we have signs out there that says that the park is closed. That is a serious and dangerous issue. So there's no money, you know, you know, we just lost our lighting when we got the upgrade to Dr. E.S. Cobb Center. So it's really a problem. Thank you.
It's my understanding that we have money for upkeep, but we don't, you know, breakage and those kinds of things, but no money's for major projects right now. And I think that's the distinction. I think Mr. Barker would.
That's correct.
Yeah, so the lights out or some, that money for those kinds of things, but not for big, major projects right now.
So what, I'm sorry, I'm kind of lost now. So you're saying there's no money? Is that classified as a big project, the lighting?
I wouldn't think so, for safety reasons. I wouldn't think that would be counted as a major project. I would strongly suggest that pass it on to.
Yes, what I would recommend is if you're looking for like a Gulf Power type light just for safety and to, you know, you know, to provide some light, you also have to understand that it can also be an attractive nuisance too, you know? And in having, inviting people into a park later at night, then you might want them to be in there. But the sign's an easy thing to take care of, and Mr. Garza can take care of both of those issues. And street light, maybe not decorative lighting like what we have down at the Maritime Park, but street light and a sign, he probably has signs sitting in his garage right now.
That the park is closed at a certain?
At a certain time, yes.
But not having the lighting is encouraging them to stay out there at dark. So not having lighting is encouraging them to do things that they shouldn't be doing out there.
Now, if you polled your neighborhood to make sure that a light is what they want, because one of the issues that I found in a couple of neighborhoods where one person came in and asked for a light, and we put it in, then we had six houses calling up and screaming, you know?
Previously, we had lighting before the upgrade came, and we lost it. It wasn't, it wasn't offered to us. We didn't know until after everything was finished, which goes, well, it's so dark over there, where's the lighting? And did they not put that into the budget to bring our lighting back? That's, that's the whole, we had it previously. We just had an upgrade done to our Dr. E.S. Cobb Center.
But I'll tell you what I'm going to do before a couple of people want to respond to you. But Mr. Barker, being the senior member here from the mayor's staff, he's obligated to take these things back, and it may not even take a call from you to Mr. Garza, is Mr. Barker will pass that information on.
Yes, sir. I really thank you because it's quite dangerous, not having lighting at all.
Whose district are you in, ma'am?
Brian's. Mr. Spencer.
Councilman Spencer will be glad to pass that on.
Thank you so much.
He'll probably climb the pole and put it up there himself.
No, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are we going to continue on? Because I know we're past our scheduled at 9:30, and we have a, it says if necessary, we'll continue discussions Wednesday morning.
Yeah.
So I've got, need to leave at 5:30.
Well, I think many of us have an event to go to tonight as well.
So are we going to continue to tomorrow at 9:00 or?
Well, let's just see what we can get done here. I think we're done with Penny for Progress.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the last issue, and this is the mayor's budget. And I just want to kind of frame this because this is the one, I think, that many of the council members have been waiting on. And I've had a little fun with it myself about what's probably a pretty serious matter. I've never, I've never made it any secret of my support of Mr. Hayward. In a couple of conversations I've had with him is I don't want to get in the matter of telling him who he can hire and who he can, and how he organizes his departments. And there is a little bit of conflict in the charter on that. It gives him exclusive authority on organizing his departments, and, but it also allows us to approve who he hires down through the department head level. And now, I want the mayor to be able to, whether it's this guy or the next guy, to be able to do those things. I am a little troubled that in the reorganization is that people that function as a department head are being called something different that keeps it from coming from council. And now, some people said that's a disrespect to council. I think it's just I'm not playing true to the charter. And here, here's my big problem with it is that if you're trying to maneuver around the charter in this area, and it's pretty obvious to the public, what are you doing in another area? So I think it's, we've got an obligation here to hold the mayor, and I've got to rely on our city attorney to help us do this because not only does he represent us, and he does represent the mayor too, but he also represents the people out there in the audience. And so, you know, you represent all the citizens of Pensacola in that regard, and you can't play favorites one to the other. And so I want to ask him to help us formulate that. But now down to what the budget is today. What the mayor is asking for, for his staffing level, is $936,900. Now, I know there's a lot of people that's got some heartburn with that. It's not the amount of money that he's asking for to do his job, it's where it's being placed, and that it's been placed in the mayor's office. Now, I don't expect to have any say-so about rearranging the seventh floor up there, but what I'd rather see is that this money, most of it anyway, would go down to different departments, whether it's the airport, or sanitation services, or Parks and Recreation, Public Works, and that it's charged back as overhead to those departments. Because it's, it's hard for me to go out to the public and explain why the mayor's budget is so big. And now, and it's also, if he's taking department heads out of departments and bringing them up to the seventh floor and calling them chiefs or division heads, then that just, that clouds the picture. So that's where I kind of wanted to start this. I didn't want to quibble with the dollar amount, it's just where it's placed into the budget. Okay.
Mr. President, I'm here to answer any questions about that.
Right, yes, sir. I hope all that was, made sense to you. But do you agree or not? Dr. Pratt?
Well, I'll take a stab at it, at least starting with something. I too share your concern. You know, I understand that this form of government, the mayor needs all the help he can get. But I think that it is becoming, you know, the charter promised, one of the things that was a concern to a lot of people was, you know, people don't elect a mayor based on their managerial background. I guess we'll see this year with the presidential election, you know, the presidential candidates have different managerial experience. But that's not what you're looking for when you elect a mayor. And so the charter provided a chief administrative officer who needed to have that experience managing a city. Because most of what we need to do is make sure the trains run on time, you know, get your garbage picked up, have the police officer there. That is the central function. There's a little bit of side function of, oh, let's promote the city, let's, you know, talk with the chamber, things like that. But, but there are a lot of things that have really concerned me with this budget and just reading through the programs and objectives and how this, this city is being run. Because we all need to know that it is being run efficiently and in a way that the things that need to happen can happen without much trauma. One of the things that struck me in reading the budget was the, there are two programs basically listed in the mayor's office. There's the city administrator's office and the mayor. And, you know, the mayor needs assistance and things like that. But the chief administrator's office, it says that the chief administrator's office works closely with the mayor and the mayor's chief of staff. But the mayor's chief of staff is under the city administrator's office. Now, that's not how it's reflected in the organizational chart. It doesn't make sense logically how, if the, one would assume that the city administrator is in charge of the city administrator's office, and that anyone in that office is under the city administrator. And we all know that the chief of staff is not functioning under the city administrator. And so I think at bare minimum, that division is not clear, and it's becoming an issue for all of us. Who do you turn to? Who is in charge? Who, you know, I had questions about the budget, and logically, I thought, well, I would turn to the person who is tasked with the day-to-day operations of this city. Send my email with questions to Mr. Reynolds, who I assume is the city administrator, and he says, oh, that goes to Mr. Asmar. That, that kind of stuff doesn't make sense with what the charter promised in terms of having the city run by a competent administrator, with the mayor having some political dynamics on his own. But, but I think that that is a problem, and the budget seems to be a game in terms of all these new people being in the mayor's office. I mean, I understand there can be some needs and some advisors he'd want to have closer to him, but, but I think it's becoming much more of a circumventing the charter issue, as you mentioned. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Dr. Pratt. I, I knew that you would have almost a scientific analysis of this, and you really have. And mine is more from the numbers perspective of this. When you look at, and let me just back up for a minute because this is one of those, whether I'm eating crow or there are about 20 people saying, I told you so. Because one of the biggest concerns for the new form of government was the cost of it. And I did not contemplate all these ancillary purposes that would be created within the mayor's office. I contemplated the mayor as the executive officer and a chief administrator, and someone that would be an assistant to both of them, and maybe two at the most. And all these positions have been created, and if you look at page 140 from a mathematical perspective, and you look at just personal services, goes from a little over half a million to over $1 million. And the operating expense of the mayor's office goes from $137,000 up to $528,000. And I think we need to take all that into account, that the new total cost of the mayor's office is $1.5 million. The allocated overhead cost recovery that they allocate back out to departments, which I said earlier, that makes it more expensive for those departments to function and thus more expensive for the citizens. It's not, you know, free lunch. It's not a written-off cost. So you truly have an increase of $1 million for this form of government, and I feel like a lot of it was not contemplated when the charter was being discussed. And I had serious concerns for continuing to have a chief of staff and a chief administrator. And again, I agree with you, Councilman Hall, that it isn't for us to say what needs to be done and what people are hired and fired, but to the extent that we have someone that is redundant service and that there's a problem with even employees and people in the community not knowing who to go to, do they answer to the mayor or Mr. Asmar? Does a, does a person in the community ask a question of Mr. Asmar or Mr. Reynolds? The issue of the budget, if you follow that frame of thought and you say, okay, we were told that Mr. Asmar develops the budget as a special project, but that makes no sense at all when you look at, we collect taxes and provide service for public safety and our function of the government, so how is the very document that guides that a special project? It is why we exist. It happens every year for, I would think there was some sort of budget 453 years ago. So that doesn't make sense. But if you, you say, okay, I get that, let's just set that aside. But then it's the ownership of the outcomes of that budget because Mr. Reynolds and all of the department heads are tasked with carrying out that budget as it's allocated and make sure they stay on budget. But yet, there's a chief of staff interjected constantly into that relationship and that process, and that has been of concern. So I understood the chief of staff position as a transitional position. He was part of the transition team. And it was not contemplated in the charter to insert an extra person in there between the chief administrator and the mayor under this form of government. So I do not support that position being funded, and I'm happy to make a motion to that after we have this discussion. But I don't know if we need to go there. I don't know if we need further explanation as to what these job descriptions are, who is able to talk to who, who we're supposed to address. It's just become quite a terrible mess on the seventh floor, and I think that the citizens deserve better. Thank you.
Just a minute, Mr. Barker. You know, I, I understand what you're saying, and, but the way that I view it is that whatever salary the chief of staff is now getting, and that we reduce the mayor's budget by that much, and anticipating that he would let that person go. Fact of the matter is, is that, and if we have, even have the power to say whether you can have a chief of staff or not, is that he could hire the person under some completely different title.
Or eliminate an unfunded position, right? I get that.
And eliminate an unfunded position. So I'm not sure that we necessarily accomplish anything there unless you just wanted to send a political message. And, you want to respond to that or?
I don't, remember, I don't play politics. This is about the citizens and their dollars. So it's not, it's not a political message. Please don't say that.
First, Mr. Barker?
Yes, sir, if you don't mind. I would like to discuss a couple of things. First of all, the department director issue and that type of thing. I've been through several city managers since I've been here. It's, it's really, in that respect, I was looking at the positions, community development. It wasn't here when I came. Then it was here. community development. It wasn't here when I came. Then it was here, then it wasn't here. Then it, you know, I think it's changed two or three times, that type, title, whether it went to a division or department. Engineering used to be, the engineer actually used to have what we now call Public Works. It was one department. The Housing Department used to be a division, not a department. Now, it's a division again. Management Information Services for years was under the Finance Department, broken out by a couple of city managers back because of the importance of the issue or whatever he thought. And so, it's changed. And what I see it as, is that the mayor has tried to reduce the level down, and he's got it down to 11 departments now. So, you know, if you look back historically, pull the last 20, 30 years' worth of budgets, and you'll see the switches that I say, said, pretty well, there's always been a legal department, pretty well, there's always been a finance department, a fire department, city clerk, airport, all the enterprises were there. And so, if you go back far enough, you'll see the scaled-down version of what we have now as it relates to departments. As it relates to staffing, the mayor has, I think, including his position, 11 positions in his department. It was explained last year that none of these were new positions. These were positions that were moved around last year in the reorganization. A couple of the titles have changed this year, but I consider these cabinet-level positions, they do not, none of them directly run a division or department. Now, there are divisions that report to Mr. Reynolds and departments that report to Mr. Reynolds, like the city manager used to be. But there are no new positions. And in the mayor's agenda that he has, and he's described to council, in order to accomplish that, he has organized it because he needs these people here. But there's no supplanting that I see of departments. These are individual bodies that will eventually fill these positions. Some of them are vacant right now. And they're looking at filling some of those. But, you know, it's being aired, and I just want to put that out. I do not see any supplanting. I don't see anything that he's really a department, but you call him division, because it doesn't have to come to council. You can go back and pass budgets, and you'll see this streamlined version pretty well, close to what 2013 is, as it relates to what used to be departments of the city. So, that has happened from city manager to city manager. And as far as the cabinet-level positions, as I call them, and then the assistants to help them, those are needs that the manager, that the mayor sees that he needs in order to accomplish his task. And I've worked with Mr. Asmar, I guess, now for what have we been doing this, about 17, 18 months? And he came in, I don't know, two or three months after the mayor was in. And Mr. Asmar is completely different from the administrator's function. And unless you really work with them closely and understand what they do, you may not get that. But Mr. Reynolds is fulfilling the charter role, which I say was the city manager role, as it relates to day-to-day operations of the city. And I think you can ask any department, except maybe Mr. Jones, who's new, but anyone that's been here for a while, and he will understand that they report to Mr. Reynolds. Mr. Asmar assists the mayor in special projects, development-type projects. And last year, he was charged with the budget. This year, he was charged with developing the budget. I was an integral part of that, as I've always been, whether I've worked with a city manager or an assistant city manager in developing the budget. There's always been someone from seventh floor, usually not the city manager, that got involved with the Finance Department and the departments in developing the budget. And Mr. Asmar is the one that the mayor has assigned to that. So, I just want to get that on record, as one that's been here for 32 years and seen the different changes that are made. And I know that appearances can be one way when you look at it. But, you know, we're a new government. And the mayor is new to the job. They're getting it organized. I would seriously doubt that there's going to be any more changes to the departments. I mean, you know, you got your first budget, and you sort of had to jump into that. And as council said last time, it was late coming to you, and then we get it to you early. One of the things in getting a budget to you early is the changes you saw in library and CRA. But that's fine. We can deal with those things. But there's nothing undermining here that I see in the whole organization and what it's doing. It's all new. Everybody's filling out their role and trying to understand where they are. But the directors, division heads, report to the administrator. And then, Mr. Asmar is a special advisor, I call it, council, whatever you want to call it, and special projects to the mayor. And they are really two different roles. You used to have two assistant city managers, sometimes three assistant city manager, and then another individual that was administrative assistant or something, but George Mayberger used to fulfill that role. And then, through reorganization, he came down to purchasing, that type of thing. So, you've always had a few high-level people up there. These other positions are specific positions, cabinet-level positions, to deal with the issues that the mayor sees. But they have no direct authority over a department. Someone mentioned today when we were talking about neighborhood services, maybe Ms. Myers. Helen Gibson is chief of neighborhood. She is not the department director over neighborhood services. That is a different function that she is filling than the department director over neighborhood services. So, I just want to put that out there so you sort of understand. I understand from y'all and how the citizens see it, that it can be confusing, by any means it can be confusing, because it's a new government. But working with it day-to-day and working with the individuals, I want to give you my comments on that. Thank you.
Yeah, just a minute, please. I still got the chair. He hadn't taken the gavel yet.
Well, I got about 15 minutes.
I just want to tag on to what Mr. Barker said. You know, we had a ceremonial mayor, and he was actually an integral part of the council. And I'm glad you mentioned about the two assistant city managers, a city manager, at least three or four attorneys up there. So, in essence, we did have a considerable number of people up in that level. I don't have any problem with what I see here. Now, if there's been some disorganized method of who you'd go see, it seems to me it's just a matter of getting clarification, recognizing this is a new form of government that we ventured into.
That we ventured into.
There's been a considerable amount of personalities, conflicts, and those kinds of things. But I don't think it's to the stage where it would cause for us to make demands on the mayor as to who he can fire or hire and those kinds of things, because that's not our role. That's not our role. Our role is to make a determination regarding the funding. If you feel that the money is excessive, you need to cite that. But I would hate to go into, venture into an area where we're going to say, do not, you got to fire this person, you got to fire this person. Just remember, this is a new form of government. We're trying to make it work. And personalities need to be left outdoors and just get in the business of trying to do what's best, best for this city.
Thank you.
No, I'm done.
All right. Well, we normally have started over here on this side. I'm going to start over here on this side.
Okay.
Mr. Spencer.
Thank you.
Only one without his hand up.
Yeah. I appreciate, I appreciate Mr. Barker's sort of historical perspective. I think it provides, provides for me a reminder of the, not only the complexity, but the fluidity of what happens basically at the cabinet level of any government, local and above. We've been reminded of the various layers that were preceded this form of government. I was a citizen that was on the, on the other side of that, often perplexed and frustrated with some of those, those layers that existed. I think now, this structure is definitely more streamlined. I think it has the potential for greater efficiency. And admittedly, some of that is, let's say, we all are looking forward to the training wheels coming off. And we want to see the removal of personalities in the application of this form of government. We deserve the, the personality conflicts that may characterize some of the frustration or, I should say, fuel some of the frustration that some people are expressing openly and publicly on blog posts, on their web pages. I mean, obviously, we've got access to some of that. And I do think that that's an issue I hope we can remove from, from this conversation. And I think we were just asked to do so. But as far as the budget that is, that is being proposed by the mayor, I look forward to other people giving their comments, but I'm supportive, as opposed to looking at one position to remove. But I'm ready to be enlightened, further enlightened.
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Let me go back to some of the things that Mr. Barker said. Did you say that staff members report to Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, you have division.
Because I wondered why we use.
The ones that were in here today that you heard, the division and department directors, Mr. Reynolds is who they report to. I report to Mr. Reynolds. Now, of course, the mayor's overall, and you understand that and that type of thing. But day-to-day operations, that type of thing, I report to Mr. Reynolds.
Define chief of staff, then.
Chief of staff is an individual that the mayor has brought on board in order to deal with special projects, issues dealing with that. Mr., the current chief of staff has no signature authority. Any RPs or something that has to go up there for them to see, all that kind of stuff, requires Mr. Signature, Mr. Reynolds' signature. He is an individual that the mayor has brought on board to deal with specific issues that the mayor has and the city has dealing with, economic development issues in some respect. He has him as the mayor's representative for the budget. I've dealt with different people. I've dealt with Mr. Kobe on that. I've dealt with Mr. Payne on that in the past. And there's been others that have been assigned by the city manager to work with finance and developing the budget as an overall. So...
Well, my point is, please, is that really kind of not an accurate title for his position, then? Chief of staff would be, I would think, would be a chief of staff. Not, if, I mean...
You know, is my title, Director of Finance, changed to Chief Financial Officer? I mean, you know...
Well, that's a little more accurate, I think.
What's in the title, and all I'm saying, that's certainly up to the mayor to decide what he's going to call what individuals.
Well, it's just, I'm getting a little confused on that issue, because when you say you have staff reporting to Mr. Reynolds, and we have someone else that's called a chief of staff, that is confusing. The other thing you talked about, and I think that Council, Vice President Townsend talked about it, was we used to have all these attorneys and, you know, city administrators, assistant city administrator. Well, I was here. I served in 2009 and 2010. For a very brief time, I remember us having an assistant city administrator, Mr. Payne, who retired just right after I came on board. So, all I ever remember, and correct me if I'm wrong, is we had Mr. Kobe as city manager. And I believe Mr. Kobe, as far as I can remember, handled many or all of the duties that our current mayor does, our chief of staff does, and our city administrator. Am I correct there?
Well, the city manager, I mean, at one time, when Mr. Bonfield was here, you had three assistant city managers at that level.
But I'm talking about '09, 2010.
Right. When the downfall occurred, and we were looking at cutting back and all that type of, you're correct. All we had at that point was, well, at one point, we had Mr. Bonfield, Mr. Kobe, and Mr. Payne. And then, when Mr. Bonfield got another position and left, we were in the middle of the charter, not charter, the vote on that, and you ended up with Mr. Kobe and Mr. Payne. And then, when the charter went through, the council decided it's no use getting the city manager. You probably wouldn't hire one at that time that would just come for a short period of time, I think. So, Mr. Kobe was the city manager, and you had Mr. Payne, and he did leave shortly after, as you recall, and Mr. Kobe handled it. But that was in an interim change. The norm was to have two or three assistant city managers and the city manager. I think what you saw, you came in when the charter changed and when it was determined that we would have a mayor that would be in charge of day-to-day operations of the city, and you would have the executive branch, which he would hold, and the council hold the legislative branch. So, you may have came in at an unusual time, I would say, if that's the time you came in than the norm since I've been here with the city.
Well, the point, the point I'm saying is, we had a city manager that actually, I believe, performed the functions that we have three persons doing today. I want to, you know, I believe that in what you said. I was here in '09, and I was here in 2010, and we had a city manager that did a very capable job. It was one person. Let me get back to this chief of staff thing. And I was witness to his contract when he was brought on 15 or 16 months ago. I was under the impression that this was a part-time position, that it would be a, just a short time that he was brought in to help with the transition. And is this become a permanent position? Not only has this become a permanent position, but is this still a part-time, is he, is his contract changed to where now he's a full-time contract employee or just part-time? Does he have like 20 hours a week here, and then has his outside law practice? Or can you help me out there?
You mentioned a very important point. The point is that Mr. Asmar's contract is similar to the city attorneys, is that I consider them, for lack of a better term, vendors of the city, because we don't give them W-2 forms. I mean, anybody who's on payroll gets W-2 forms. But it's a contract, I believe the contracts with John Asmar Law Firm or something like that, is who the contract is with. And he is not an employee, he's not a contract employee, because I consider those to be W-2 employees. He is a vendor, and he gets a 1099 for his services.
Okay. I, you know, I traveled, I mean, I'm going to just kind of try to bring it down a little bit. You know, I travel these streets a lot. I, you know, I walk these streets, and I, you know, have a, you know, real concern about, about this city and I, about where we're kind of going with this. And it just seems like that we have this turmoil here. As I walk these halls, I hear poor morale. I hear, I hear issues in our community. We talk about trust all through this right here. Trust, restore trust. And what I'm hearing out on the street is that there isn't somewhat of an issue of that. It breaks my heart. It truly breaks my heart. It keeps me up at night. I don't think that we, I believe that this is really a roadblock for this city moving forward. I've talked to community leaders. I've talked to citizens. I've talked to everywhere, you know, just a whole mix of people. I really, this troubles me. I think that what I'm hearing from 95... I think that what I'm hearing from 95% of the time, that this chief of staff is holding this city back, and that he has affected it, I think, in a very negative way. And until he is, until he moves on, I think that we will continue to have him as a distraction, a distraction. And I just hope that at some point, that it's looked at as when he becomes more of a distraction, a liability than he is an asset. And I try not to make this personal, but I think that, I really think that, I hope someone does something, because I'm hearing it everywhere, everywhere. There might, so I'm just going to stop there, and I might comment later after I hear from the rest of the council. Thank you.
Dr. Pratt?
I spoke at the beginning, so I'll let...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, never mind. Okay, let's come over to this side. If you want to go first, over here.
Okay. It's all, it's back around to me. And this may take a couple of minutes, but I do believe that it is extremely important that you hear what I have to say. And then I'll tell you at some point my reason for saying it. We all know that we had multiple, I offered multiple opportunities for us to get together and to hammer this out. We all knew that it was a new charter. And what I'm referring to is that when we talked about a retreat or a strategic planning session, that would have been an opportunity for us to iron this out. And the reason I do things this way is because of my background, primarily as an educator, because the job of the instructor is to lead the students to a consensus, to provide opportunities for them to learn. And we can be smarter. Had we had a retreat before this, we would be smarter. We're talking about the budget, but we're blending it with personalities, persons, et cetera. And this is, that's useless when we're talking about the numbers. Why do I bring it up? Because in the future, I would encourage you to listen to what I'm saying that would have guided us, that we had a perfect opportunity. We've had these books almost forever. And the same concerns that you have today, you had them before. We all know that we're working with a new charter, and we needed that time to iron out the things that we did not agree with or that we did not understand about the charter. Had we done that, ladies and gentlemen, we wouldn't be doing this. Because we knew, as I indicated, that it was a new charter, and the concerns that you have today, you had them before. You also had an opportunity to iron it out. But you blew that opportunity, because we never called Elaine and gave her a date that we could all sit down and do either some sort of a retreat or strategic planning to evaluate and to discuss the concerns that we have about the new charter. We keep referring to it as growing pains and this and that. But we had some things that we held in the back of our mind, and we blew the chance to sit down and iron out the foolishness. So here we are today, rather than talking, we look at the budget and say, oh, this is what it is. Well, I don't like this, I don't like that. And then we're going down the line, so to speak, with the former administrative structure, who was here, what they did. But ladies and gentlemen, I tell you, had we, had you listened, and I don't refer to you as my students, I'm a student myself, a student of Dr. Wu's. But had we listened and taken the opportunity before today to all these little things that we're holding in the back of our minds, we should have and we could have ironed it out. So I'm sitting here, I'll listen the rest of the time, but I want to know which way we're going. Are we going with the people, or are we going with the budget? And when you mix the two, that's a problem, because you don't want to separate them. So what are we going to do? Are we dealing with these numbers on the paper? Or are we going to spend the rest of the afternoon, the rest of the evening, on the personalities and the characters involved? And this doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. Makes no sense at all, especially when we had the opportunity. And I pleaded with you folks, let's sit down and take the charter and look at it and iron out the things that we either agreed with or disagreed with. So now here we sit, and it just doesn't make us look smart. We had an opportunity to do this before now, and that's all there is to it. And I'll listen to the rest of this malarkey.
You know, on the one thing about the strategic planning, perhaps my memory is flawed, but this is, this is how I remember it happening, is we agreed to have it. I had appointed you to chair the strategic planning. We had a date, and then Elaine said that there was a problem about the date that we had, and I did not ask her for any explanation. I just assumed it was you, and that we were going to have to change it. As far as I'm concerned, that ball is still in your court to arrange for us to have a strategic planning session.
What I did was, when I spoke to Elaine, and I said, if they can't agree on one day, let's give them an option. Give them two days to choose from. And you couldn't get more than three people to call. And y'all know who you are, because either you called or you didn't call. But I understood, I said, well, one day, there's only one choice. So I said, okay. And Elaine and I looked at the calendar, and I said, well, if they can't do it on this day, let's give them a second day. Let's give them somewhat of a choice. And as a group, we feel to pick either day.
Okay. All right, let's get this wrapped up. Who wants to speak next, Ms. Myers?
Well, I don't want to be rushed.
Okay.
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 I don't really have that much to say.
Okay.
But I don't want to be rushed in saying it.
Okay.
I agree with Councilman Gerald's. We should only be looking at the budget that the mayor has presented, just the budget. That's it. Not personalities, not why he hired this person or that person. I have read the charter, and I have read it many times. I believe he can hire whoever he wants to hire. Now, I feel that, as I look at this, that there are some things that are excessive. We can cut his budget. We don't have to approve this budget. We can reduce it. If he wants to continue to hire Mr. Asmar, that's his prerogative. And there's not anything we can do about that at all. That's his prerogative. So, what I would like to see us do, I'm not going to vote for this budget, because when I look at the increase on all of the line items, like 9111, has grown dramatically. So what you need to do, in my opinion, is go down line by line, look at the increases, and just take this back to a reasonable amount. If he wants to use his money to hire Mr. Asmar, that's his prerogative. And however, if you compare the council's budget to the mayor's budget, I think it's out of balance. Remember, the charter says that the council is a governing body. And yet, we, in my opinion, have not been given the funds necessary to fulfill our role as a governing body. I think that there's some imbalances when you look at the mayor's staff and our...
Our staff.
Well, anyway.
What's that?
Okay. Well, and please, I love Mr. Messer. Don't take this personally, but as an attorney myself, I would find it very difficult to be in the position that Mr. Messer is in, because sometimes we do have opposing views that require a legal opinion. And it would be, they say you get the opinion you pay for. You know, and I think there's a lot of, I know there's some truth to that, and I won't give you all any stories about my involvement with hiring experts when I was practicing law, but there is some truth to that. And what I would like to see is the council's budget increased, and the mayor's budget decreased to bring some balance. And that we look at, there may be times when we need a legal opinion that maybe even Mr. Messer would not be comfortable giving to us. Because I remember on one occasion, and I won't mention what the issue was, but you didn't give us an opinion because you said you didn't have a dog in the fight. I don't think you wanted a dog in the fight. But I just, I think that's where we need to be looking, is trying to balance the resources of the council by reducing the budget of the mayor. And maybe we don't, won't end up reducing it that much, but I think that he has a sufficient amount of money in the past. He certainly, you know, got by with a certain amount of money in 2011, and then it was increased in 2012. And, you know, if you look at from 2011 to 2013, and certain line items have been increased dramatically. So, that's what I would suggest we do, that we take personalities completely off the table, and that we just look at dollars and cents and needs, and I think that we can come up with something that's fair to the mayor and fair to the council.
Okay. I'm going to give you a chance to speak, Ms. Max. Regarding adjusting the mayor's budget and raising the council's budget, we'll probably have city or council executive on board within a couple of weeks. Now, I mean, we're down to picking the top five candidates. I don't know who they are right now, but I just, I had a phone call late last night from Ms. Smith at Landrum. And before we rush into raising the council's budget up, let's wait till we bring the executive on board, and if we need to do a supplemental budget resolution in the middle of this budget year, Mr. Barker, correct me if I'm wrong, but that we could go in and perhaps raise council's budget up and decrease the mayor's down, if some of those functions that's being done on the seventh floor right now could come in under council. Let's don't just pick an arbitrary figure now. The other thing is, I know you said you were going to vote against this part of the budget. If you feel like you want to do that, make a motion to not approve the mayor's portion of the budget. We can take a vote. It'll either pass or it won't. And if it, so, that would, that's just my recommendation. And I'm not trying to push you into one way or the other on that. I'm trying to validate that I hear what you're saying and give you an opportunity of a way of doing it, instead of us just rushing you all and not even voting on it. So, Dr. Wu?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm going to start my comments by saying, of all the people sitting around the table, I'm probably the person that fought the new charter the hardest. So, you would look at me and expect me to be the person to lead the charge, to do whatever I can to make sure it didn't work. But as I said on previous occasion, I believe that under our form of government, you fight like as hard as you can till the vote is taken. And then once the vote is taken, your obligation, or at least I felt like, my obligation is to give the people what they want. Now, what the people said they wanted was they wanted a strong mayor. They wanted somebody to be in charge, and somebody that would have the power to hire and fire. When I first came on council, as was stated earlier in 2005, Tom Bonfield was the city manager. Robert Payne had half of the duties as assistant manager, and Al Kobe had the other part as the other assistant manager. So you had Janet Brown in the office, Robert Payne and Al Kobe, and Tom Bonfield. Eventually, Tom left. I can't remember if Tom or Robert left first.
Tom left first.
Tom left first, and that left Robert Payne and Al Kobe. But the two gentlemen did not hire a third person. Eventually, Robert Payne left, and I don't think people ever valued Al Kobe, but he did the work of three people. And he never complained. It absolutely amazed me that that one man did that much work and never complained. You could come up here at nine o'clock at night, and there'd be a light on upstairs. But I digress. I feel that we really need to give the charter a chance to work. If the people said they wanted something, I feel they should have the opportunity to see if it will work or not. If they're not happy, in two years, there's going to be an election. If somebody wants to run, they can say the staff got too large. They're spending too much money. They have every right to do that. I know there's a lot of conflict about Mr. Asmar, and it makes me sad to see that there is the conflict. And what I say is that really, people say to me, do you have a problem? I said, no, because he works for the mayor. He doesn't work for me. Now, if he worked for me, it might be a different case. But he doesn't. He's not my staff member. He's the mayor's staff member. And there are several people that have, I have to tell you, the last time I was with the mayor and Mr. Asmar, and it wasn't long ago, and it hasn't been that often, I said to both of them that they're people under the impression that John Asmar is sprinkling pixie dust on the mayor, and the mayor's walking around like a zombie with no idea what's happening. And the mayor looked at me, and he says, I know everything that's happening. He says, Mr. Asmar is not doing anything that I don't instruct him to do. Now, whether you like what he's doing or you don't like what he's doing, that's a different case. But to give the impression that he's controlling the mayor, at least from what the mayor told me on that occasion, that's not the case. Some people say remove X amount, but as Councilman Hall said, you can remove as much as you want. The mayor's still going to hire who he wants. I mean, you might remove five of the positions. If he wants Asmar on his staff, under the new charter, he can have Asmar on his staff. That doesn't mean I like it, doesn't mean I dislike it. But he has the right to pick who his staff members are. So I'm going to vote for the budget, mainly because I think the people, in my mind, and I'm not trying to convince you, you have to come to your own decision. I'm going to vote for the budget because I want the people to have the chance to have what they voted for work. And if it doesn't work, in two years, the people can say, doggone it, I don't like this, I've had enough. But that does it for me, Mr. President. Thank you.
Mr. Wu, let's let Ms. Max speak, please. Okay. Good job.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Mr. President. There are four points I would like to make. First of all, let me refer back... First of all, let me refer back to why I ran for city council in 2008 and served in 2009 and 2010, and that this kind of speaks to something Councilman Townsend said, you know, about how large the staff was, how large the administrative staff was. That was exactly one of two reasons why I threw my hat in the ring, because I and a number of other citizens, who, if you will remember, formed a budget study group, were disgusted with the amount of administrative waste, and we included that. We, as citizens, felt it was top-heavy, and we saw what happened when we came on. We, you know, we worked hard, of course, they were hard times, but as someone has famously said, if you don't take, you know, the time to take advantage and make the corrections you need is when there is an emergency. You know, you take advantage of the emergency to accomplish what needs to be accomplished. And so, I am appalled, and let me, I am also appalled that in voting for the charter, here we are at FY 2013, and the budget that the council I served on worked so hard to get down in the top echelons of this city has increased almost threefold. This is not what I voted for, Councilman Wu, when I voted for the new charter. That is not what we voted for, okay? That is not what we voted for. We voted for responsible fiscal accountability, and increasing the top-level budget, almost, you know, increasing it threefold, is not what we voted for. So, just so you say that. But, more technically, I would like to bring to your attention that there is a total disconnect between the organizational chart on page 139, where the office of the city administrator only consists of the city administrator and executive assistant, okay? With the, on page 140, the program name which is titled City Administrator's Office, $786,200. I don't think the city administrator and assistant make that much money. So I would beg you, at the very least, you know, this is a little shell game going on here, okay, about how the mayor's gonna look at the next election. So, you know, if you're gonna adopt this budget, at least have, let's have truth in budgeting, truth in naming things, and at the very least, switch around and, you know, put the right figures in the city administrator's office line and the office of the mayor. Because it clearly shows in this organization chart that everything except the city administrator and executive assistant is the office of the mayor. So let's have truth in that. And then, next item. There are three chiefs in this budget, chief of economic opportunities and sustainability, chief of staff, chief of neighborhoods. It is very interesting that their salaries are not commensurate, and you all received the breakdown of the salaries, because I had asked for it long ago as a public records item, and I made sure that you all had it. It is appalling to me that the one woman in the cabinet, that has a cabinet-level position, the lone African-American who has a cabinet position is almost, you know, half the salary of the other two cabinet positions, the chief of staff and the chief of, the future chief of economic opportunities and sustainability. Why are we going to hire a diversity office if in the mayor's own office, you know, he does not do well with his own diversity? Anyway, I think that's an appalling inequity, and I would certainly like to see that remedied. And then finally, on page, thank you, on page, sorry, yeah, okay, on page 144, and the line item number, where is that, where's advertising, 9337, you remember, we talked about it, I made the comment that, that huge advertising amount that is, you know, the Zimmerman retainer in MIS, you know, you put that budget in abeyance to get some break out of that, a lot of that money needs to be put and reflected into the mayor's budget, because that's really where it's being spent. That also, please excuse my frankness, but I think that's also part of the economic shell game. Thank you.
May I respond, since I was mentioned?
You may, but I'm gonna be leaving here in about five minutes, and I would like an opportunity to vote.
I'll make it very brief. Since my name was mentioned, I feel like I need to respond. I understand the statement was made, and correct me if I'm wrong, that a person voted for a charter not knowing, you know, that it was gonna be such a size and that it would be more economical. Number one, I never remembered in the campaign anybody said it would be more economical. I never heard anybody say how many staff members there would or would not be. All I heard was somebody wanted somebody in charge and to be responsible. Now, if you can show me a piece of literature where it says, "You vote for this charter, and you're gonna save $100,000," I'll retract my statement. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Smack.
Well, I'm proud to say that I supported the charter, and I'm proud to say I stood out on street corners and supported the charter, and I'm proud to tell you right now, I still support the charter. There is nothing wrong with our charter. Now, what our charter does, it sets up basically an executive branch and a legislative branch and a budgetary branch. The council, one of the council's sole functions is the budget. This is not the mayor's budget. What comes out of here is going to be our budget. So we have to decide whether or not these various items that are presented to us are economically feasible and in the best interest of the taxpayer. It has nothing to do with the strong mayor. What this has to do is our primary function under the charter, the council's, is the budget. And I have already said, we can't tell the mayor who to hire, I don't care who he hires. But what I do care about is what I am looking at right now tends to be a drastic escalation in the money that is being allocated to that office. So I'm going to make a motion that, is that okay?
I was supposed to speak and defer to Ms. Mack and have a motion to make, and Sam is getting tired.
Okay, go ahead and speak, and then I'll make a motion.
Okay. And, you know, once again, we've taken the long way home. I have so much respect for everyone's input. I started with support of what Dr. Pratt said, her scientific analysis, I brought the financial analysis to this. I stood shoulder to shoulder with many people to fight for the new charter. I still believe in the charter, I do. Supporting the charter, supporting the mayor, supporting whatever you want to support, does not excuse us as a council of analyzing this budget. This budget is out of control. It is a million dollars more than it was under the old form of government. Now, when I said and mentioned my concern about a redundant service being offered by the chief of staff and the chief administrator and the mess of who reports to who, and the confusion on the seventh floor, and the confusion of this council and citizens, something needs to be done about that. I think it's a shame that folks have brought into that, that there are issues out there that I have addressed and tried to bring it into where its personalities. This affects my life not one bit at home. I come in here and do my work for the citizens. It's not personal for me, and that's one thing that I think is a shame if someone thinks it does. We've got to address this issue right here. What I think we need to do is hold this, and I'm making a motion that we hold this budget in abeyance until our council executive has been hired, and we are able to address the need to balance these budgets back out with the legislative and the executive branch. So that is my motion, that we do not approve this budget today, we hold it in abeyance, subject to council executive coming on board.
You're talking about the mayor's portion of the budget?
The mayor's portion of the budget, held in abeyance until our council executive is on board, which you said is days away, and we are able to further discuss the need for council support.
I'll second it, but may I ask a question?
Sure.
And I'll just be...
I'm gonna have to turn it over to Mr. Townsend, I just, yes, just...
Okay. Well, then, you know, I guess we should probably just go ahead and vote if we're gonna start losing people, because I think all of us have a similar thing.
Yeah.
So I'll just...
Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, let's do, show of hands. All in favor? One, two, three, four. All opposed? One, two, three, four, five. Okay.
Okay, can I make a motion?
You may.
Okay.
Be mindful that Mr. Bear still wants to speak, and so whether we take the vote or not, I'm gonna give him an opportunity to speak.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we reduce the mayor's budget by $400,000, and that will take him back to basically 2011 with a little more to spend. And he was hiring Mr. Asmar then, under that budget. And so, that's my motion, is that we reduce the mayor's budget by $400,000.
Second.
That's got a second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, show of hands. Three, all opposed? Dr. Wu? Yeah. It fails three, five. Okay, before we work on the main motion that's had two amendments to it, Mr. Bear.
Thank you, Mr. President. This process is unlike any legislative process I've ever seen dealing with the budget. I've watched state, I've watched congressional, I've sat overnight in budget negotiations in the Capitol, in the state Capitol, and seen them go back and forth about things they wanted in the budget and why they wanted it in the budget to get them justified. And the process is so radically different from this, pretty much what you've gotten, you've gotten the mayor's budget, which is sitting in front of you. That's the mayor's budget, the mayor drew that up with the help of staff. That is his proposal to you as to what he thinks should be funded for this next year. What your job is, as the legislative branch, which Ms. Myers mentioned, is to take that as a starting point and go from there to see and ask the citizens of this city what is most important to them, not to just wholesale rubber-stamp this, which I can see from some of you, you set out to do this from the beginning, was that you're going to rubber-stamp this budget, and I've heard, let's push things off to 2014, like the ALS thing, which we have a real opportunity right now to take advantage of that with some free equipment from the county and training, which may not be there in the future. And it's just, it's unbelievable to me that you can't actually talk about these things and have it, even a committee structure would help you, where you could have a committee that looked at, say, the enterprise areas, you could have a committee that looked at the mayor's budget, whatever, get a smaller group of people together, but this is just an exercise, you can sit down here and listen to some people present, and then just vote, and it's clear to me that it's going to pass tonight, and if I've seen the votes already, it's going to. I heard Mr. Wu say that he's gonna give it a chance because he voted for the charter, and he was, well, he didn't vote for the charter, he was against the charter, but he wants to give the charter a chance to work. But I would venture a guess that he hasn't talked to his citizens about what's in this budget and what's best for them, and if he has, you know, I can stand corrected. But this process is just kind of a train that you just don't want to get in front
Dr. Wu?
You're lucky nothing's coming out of my mouth right now.
Okay, all right. So the budget, the motion was, is to prove, the city council approved the mayor's fiscal year 2013 proposed budget as amended. The First Amendment had to do with outside agency funding. Second Amendment is, had to do with the MIS budget being held in abeyance.
Point of order.
I thought we were just voting on that one budget, and just the mayor's office.
We did.
Okay, but we...
But we don't have any more presentations.
Right, but we have two public hearings for the citizens, so if we're saying we approve the budget tonight, we are truly neglecting our job as council, truly. Well, we're approving it to be brought to the public hearing. I think you sort of... I understand the amendments, and I understood that we would today have the opportunity to have those amendments stick, that they are part of a committee of a whole action, but to say that we approve the budget today, we are not giving the citizens the proper notice, because I guarantee you, they do not know that that's what we intend to do here today, that that's what the two budget hearings are for.
Yeah.
I don't think we should be taking that action.
Yeah. Okay. All right. All right. Please vote. All in favor?
Of what?
Wait a minute, vote on what?
Of this.
The motion that was made yesterday morning.
Of this.
The motion that was made yesterday morning, that city council approved the mayor's fiscal year 2013 proposed budget. There's two amendments to that, one had to do with outside agency funding, and the other one had to do with the MIS budget being held in abeyance.
I think procedurally, we have to allow for the, traditionally, we've always did what we've called a, kind of a straw vote, and that let us know, just procedurally, we are saying yes.
This is a committee of the whole.
Yeah, I know. But we have to allow for the public opportunity to have input. And on that second public presentation, and once we've heard all of the concerns of the public, as well as other council members, then we finalize it. We can't finalize it today.
Right, right. That'll be done after two public hearings.
Can we continue this meeting until the public hearing, or table this motion until the public hearing?
I move, we table the motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay, and that's not debatable. Okay, all in favor? Raise your hand.
Aye.
Oh.
All opposed? Okay.